All right. Welcome to the Willetts City Council Special Meeting of June 21st. At exactly 6:02, I will call this meeting to order. Let's start with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all.
Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Rodriguez.
President.
Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mayor Connie.
Yes, thank you. All right. The first business item is the City of Willetts General Plan Land Use Element Update Workshop. And we will hear from our Community Development Director, Mr. Dusty Dooley.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Connie. Appreciate the council allowing us to have this special meeting tonight and speak to this very important project here. We're looking at completing an update to our land use element of our general plan and really shaping the vision for what we want to see our community look like at least for the next 20 years here. Lucky to be working with our city planner, Taylor Perry. We have our consultants with you here, John and Colette. I appreciate them coming down all the way from Arcata today to be with us. And it's actually been a team effort to hopefully get some good ideas in front of the council here for discussion tonight. Appreciate all the public input we've gotten to date. Definitely, obviously, looking for more folks to get involved in the process. There's a website, willetslanduseupdate.com. Please do check it out. Colette, John, and the team have a lot of good information on that. There's some interactive tools. And certainly, your city staff is available to answer questions and meet with folks.
Could you repeat that website?
Yeah. And just very quickly, again, if you're a property owner and you think you may benefit from rezoning your property and you think that would lead to a good idea that would not only benefit you but the community as well, there's an opportunity to propose a change of your zoning through this city-initiated comprehensive review of our zoning map, which is part of and concurrent with the update of the land use element. So you notice it's a little bit different setting typically. And so the idea, if it pleases the mayor, is to kind of have a little bit of a more informal setup, allow for sort of the interaction, more of a conversation. We do have some folks from the public here as well. And again, if it pleases the mayor, we're going to start with going over some of the potential prospective zone changes that are outlined in the report and then move on to some of the policy language.
Sure. I think that sounds good. I would like to check with the cameraman to make sure that if folks from the audience would like to speak, they have a way to do so that he can pick it up with his microphone. Are we -- we're good set up?
Yes.
Great. Okay. That sounds wonderful.
Yeah. And then we'll also, we have a PowerPoint up here. It very much matches the information we have in the packet. But if it does become helpful, we can put information up on the screen. John's here with the keyboard and mouse, and he can interact with that. And then we have some tools through the GIS system that he can interact with on the TV up here that may also be helpful for the conversation.
Great.
Yeah. So this is building off of the discussion that we had with council a month or a month and a half back. I'm conscious of trying to keep this meeting to, you know, a relatively decent timeframe. So there are some things I certainly do want to focus on, but I'm going to kind of just get right into it. There's a lot of good information in the staff report and background, how we got here tonight. This is the first night we're pretty well into the game. And again, where this is a process that is being grant-funded and we are on a timeline to get this done by the end of the year. There may be some -- we'll see if there is an opportunity to work with the funding cycles to potentially prolong the project timeline and would allow us to spend some more intimate time with the project, but nothing to announce on that front yet. So we're still moving on a timeline to get this done before the end of the year. So I'm on page one of the land use designated changes in S O I area amendments. So this is an attachment to your staff report. I think it's identified as an attachment. So we identified Main Street essentially from Oak Street to Commercial Street, those properties up front of Main Street. We currently have the commercial general zoning designation. You've got it up there, too. You're welcome to look up there. This is also a report here. And the idea was to change the zoning from commercial general to Main Street mixed use. So the idea is currently that the city doesn't have a mixed-use zoning designation. These are quite common throughout jurisdictions these days. And it is what it sounds like. It's to allow for a mixture of both residential and commercial uses. What's a little bit unique is that, you know, like most old downtowns, you have buildings that were allowed to be built out to property lines. There's no opportunity for off-street parking. Recently, the council allowed, changed the zoning code to allow for residential to be built above ground floor commercial. It may be through creation of this mixed-use zoning that we would also look to allow residential behind the storefront commercial. And we may also want to look at reducing or even eliminating off-street parking standards. Again, there's been an understanding and a call to try and figure out a way to make use of some of the empty storefronts. And certainly, we've had conversations about that in the past. But once we are able to get property owners to fix up their spaces so that they're turnkey-ready, the next likely issue for making use of those spaces is the lack of off-street parking.
So Dusty, I get it that we want to be flexible, but it seems like if people just go into it without -- I mean, if I was going to put up, for the sake of argument, 30 units in a spot that never had units before and now a lot of those people are going to want to park somewhere and encroach on the neighborhood or cause issues, shouldn't there be some way to provoke some analysis of that? Or would that happen automatically during the approval of the projects? Because if I came in and I was already, God-given, I can do whatever I want, I might not put a lot of thought into how my tenants are going to spread out in the neighborhoods.
Yeah. And, you know, that's a very good question, Jerry, or councilmember Gonzalez. You know, what tends to sort of organically happen is that even with parking standards in place or, you know, allowing for a reduction in parking standards, a lot of times developers have their own interest and they're going to be looking to establish those parking places otherwise. You know? And I'll mention when we get sort of into the policy language, too, and start looking at forming these mixed-use zonings, you know, there are going to be some standards in place where you get to one tier and you're fine, but if you can't meet any parking at all, then, you know, we have some sort of other standards in place where we put them through some sort of discretionary view at that point. So there can kind of be tiers to it as well.
So if we have something, a corridor that is currently zoned, or it's being, that's intended to use right now is to be for business and they want to convert it to residential, it isn't as simple as just calling it a residential unit and putting in a kitchen sink, so to speak, and just saying it's residential. Will there be another layer of ensuring that it's a safe residential unit? Or can anybody on that Main Street section just simply say, "I'm going to live in this," what was originally intended to be a commercial, say, or business?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how someone would transition and if there's any foresight that we should be thinking about, like, for safety purposes, to make sure that that transition happens.
Yeah. Thank you for asking that. You know, certainly you rely on building code, right? So if you have an occupancy change and now you're doing a commercial structure and making it into a habitable patient, there's quite a bit of safety provisions that are within the building.
So there's already ordinances or laws in place that we're -- that we got to address.
Right. And I think as we get into the mixed-use discussion of creating this new zoning district, it will be important, you know, do we want to allow for the full conversion of the commercial unit to simply residential? Or do they need to maintain that commercial unit at the front of the street and then build the residential unit either, you know, above, behind the building? Or maybe it's allowed for the conversion of a portion of the commercial unit?
So is that a decision you're asking us, or asking us what our opinion is? Is that a decision you want from tonight? Or are we just throwing the idea out there?
Well, it's, I mean, it can be all of that. What I, what we certainly want to hear from council is if these ideas are so far off that really, you know, let's not pursue them. Or, yeah, it sounds like a decent idea, but these are our concerns about it. So as you're moving forward, you know, please keep these concerns in mind and craft standards in a way that help address those concerns.
Okay. So then mine would just be craft standards, but, yeah. Okay.
I suppose, I, when I think of mixed use, I think of commercial with residential. I don't think of a house being right in the middle of a block of shops. And I think that that's smart for a number of reasons, but primarily because residents often want a different level of noise and activity than shopkeepers do. And so it works if, you know, the residents go away during the day when business happens and then come back when businesses are closed. But if you have a home there all the time, or, you know, but if someone say 30 units, it kind of doesn't fit with the usage that's already in place. So from my input, I would say mixed means has to have, you know, commercial with residential.
I'm going to look at like that apartment that's over the brick house. I mean, to me, that's the classic example. There's an apartment over there and you rent knowing that at 5:00 or whatever business they're doing, they're doing, and then at night it closes and you have your apartment. It comes with its own set of challenges, but that's just, that's how I envision the mixed use.
I have seen two, what I would call, business areas in town that ideally would be nice if they had business fronts in them, but people are living in them and they are within that zone. So I was kind of thinking about those situations. So but if we're leaning towards what you were talking about, essentially, that wouldn't really work because they've converted what should be a business front into an informal residential. And so, you know, we would have to --
I guess the question would be --
Would your preference be that we get back to --
I guess the question would be, are those incidences that you're referring to permitted? Or is that just something that's happening without anybody really paying that much attention to it?
I don't think anybody's paying attention and I personally don't know what the rules are.
Right.
And so I'm not really sure. I'm sure that city staff may be aware of some of them.
Matt.
Yeah. I was going to just kind of agree with some of the comments being made. I think it's really nice, you know, downtown business district to have the storefronts be pretty much continuous. If we had a bunch of them converting to just residences, it's not only that the residents might be less happy living on a street that's mostly commercial, but also it reflects from the walkability of your business district and people being able to park once and go to a bunch of different places and be attracted to that. So I was just thinking maybe allowing essentially by right under a mixed-use zone that a residence off of the frontage or above might be something that would be allowed by right as long as there'd be certain criteria. And that, but any conversion of the actual storefront on the street be subject to, at the very least, a conditional use permit, so we don't see a bunch of conversions like that.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Conditional use permit, sounds like a good way to account for that.
We have a building downtown that's under the old, I don't know, way that it was. And our building is right up to the city, you know, to the sidewalk. And it's four foot on one side, flush on the other side, and two feet in the back.
Right.
And that, that's it. And so there's this completely, you know, if somebody wanted to run the front but yet have lived in the back, there's still no place for the car to be parked if they're going to have a car. And so I think we have to be, you know, consider that depending upon what the history of the area is also.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that feedback. And what I understood, and I think this is in tune in how we have this in the description, is, you know, really, you know, yes, opportunity to create both a residential unit in a commercial setting downtown. Ideally, it's located above or behind and we retain that commercial presence on the front of South Main Street. Maybe there's an opportunity to convert a portion of that frontage with a use permit. And then, yeah, keep exploring the idea of reducing parking standards in that situation, the idea of eliminating them, though, not, you know, that we need to talk about further and maybe keep that under a variance setting where we look at a case-by-case situation, but not allow it.
I mean, people already complain about lack of parking.
Absolutely.
On Main Street. So, you know, eliminating parking standards sounds terrifying.
That sounds like a good summary. So in terms of the public, since this is more of a workshop, are we going to go, as you introduce each piece, will we go back and forth and let the public weigh in? Or are you going to want them to weigh in at the very end? How is this going to work today? I'm curious.
Yeah. I certainly, yeah, I would leave that up to the mayor. But again, the hope was is to have the opportunity to kind of communicate and not be opening and closing public comment each time. And maybe it can be as simple as if someone has a question, they can just raise their hand and --
Yeah. Does anybody here tonight have any comments that they'd like to make about mixed use in the downtown area? All right. Jean, I saw your hand shoot up. How about you go first?
Well, you know, I've had people actually talk to me about their concern about, they feel like there's a lack of that mixed-use acceptance on Main Street. And the other concern is that there's a huge lack of housing vacancies in our town and our whole 9-5-4-9-0. So we're short, I think, on housing. And so I'd love to see, you know, something above. But also, I have concerns that there are businesses that have set vacant, that have been vacant for years now. So when we're having a shortage of housing, it seems like if there was a willingness, that might not be a bad idea. Now, in other cities, people walk to their parking spaces. They have to walk a little distance away. So I, I don't see, it's like we're looking for a problem. And I know that when you make a plan, the idea is you look to see if there's going to be any problems. But I already see problems. Vacant storefronts, multiples next to each other, things that say there like that. That's already a problem in our town when people need housing. And there isn't apartments or things for people to rent. You know, if you can buy a house, there's houses. So I think being flexible is really important. And what I heard someone else say to me is, well, they just don't feel like we're flexible with the plan. And I'm trying to hear flexibility here. It sounds like I've heard some.
Yes, thank you. If everybody, when you have a comment, at least the first time, identify yourself just for the record so we all can have it on.
Sure. My name's Matt Gomans. I'm actually a planner for the county. And we purchased this lot across the way here, Bill John's place. And me and some business partners are actively trying to do exactly this. We're trying to get 20 to 30 apartments on there and have street frontage for commercial uses, for, you know, a grocery store, convenience store, maybe a sandwich store. I'm not quite sure how that's going to play out yet, but that's, this is exactly what we want to do. Parking is, so I've been working on the design myself, just trying to figure out how it's going to work. And with one and a half spaces, it's really, really rough. One space is more reasonable per, you know, per unit. And I'm not sure what you're going to do about the height, but we're going to request to try to go three stories. Because two stories, I mean, in planning, you get two options. You get to go up or out. So you get to choose that and think it's better to go up at this stage just because you've mentioned it last time, that you liked having a bigger backyard, you know, and being able to have that. You don't go up and go up a lot. But, yeah, we're trying to figure out how to incorporate. So it's really rough for us because you don't have anything yet to like solidify to point our finger and say, "This is what we need to do." So flexibility is important. We appreciate you being flexible. And I really want the mixed use to go through with this project. And one of the other things that is, I didn't want to mention, you were talking about the street frontage that goes on commercial. Trying to lay this out, that's a lot of commercial space to run out that way. And then there's no, you know, you're going to have to park over here and then walk around. The way we've been coming up with it, the better option is to have the shops face this way because it's a shorter area and you've got parking right up front. So if you go in and get groceries or whatever, you can park right, right in front of the store and walk in instead of going around. But it doesn't really lend itself to like the visual, you know, across the commercial street. So that's a bit of a compromise. They were, we're very much in favor of this.
And we'll get to it later in the presentation, or you may remember from last time, but we're looking at creating two mixed-use zoning districts. One specifically for the downtown area, recognizing sort of the unique build-out of that. And then another mixed-use that could be applied, you know, throughout the city. And we're definitely in conversations with Matt. Appreciate the fact that he's got a real development that he can make use of this tool that we're trying to create, which again is the sort of general mixed use to use outside of the downtown.
Right. It's helpful to have an actual idea rather than theoretical ideas of what might happen, you know, eventually, so.
Yeah.
My name's Lila Ryan. I really support residential above commercial. The empty storefronts are really a sad sight. And I was just curious what's built into this as far as the height of the buildings on Main Street because that would certainly affect whether you could put residential over some of them because they might not be tall enough. Could I have a thing to what I said before?
I think you asked a question.
Was there, oh, did you?
She had a question.
Was that a question?
Yes.
Looks like they're looking.
Forty-five feet is the current height of the C-1 district. So that would accommodate two stories residential above commercial. The city planner's double-checking that.
I just had a comment about the parking question. And that is, again, flexibility, I think, is important. But if you're, especially for example, a senior who doesn't want to have a garden and doesn't necessarily want to or even can't drive, being located along the downtown corridor, the ideal. So not necessarily requiring parking for every single unit if it is primarily intended for people that aren't going to drive. But it's really hard to enforce that, I understand. So I think some kind of flexibility or variance or something that in general residential units want to have a parking space so that they're not going to just park right on the street where people want to shop. But I think it's entirely possible and maybe even desirable to have some apartment units that don't require.
For me, I was just thinking, the parking problem could be, could be solved if you just had parking limits. So you can't park more than, can't park during certain hours. So if businesses are open during the daytime and you can't, you can't park during the daytime, but you can park there at night, then that lends itself to the ability for you to have that parking. And, you know, you're going to run in your house and get something. You can do it in that two-hour limit or that sort of, so maybe those kinds of rules would be able to allow us that compromise.
I think in the downtown area, we also are fortunate that we have the city parking lot back there on School Street. And there's a potential that you could reserve some of those spaces for residents nearby who, you know, would pay a monthly rate or something, set aside, you know, four or six spaces. That could generate, you know, revenue to cover the limitations. Jerry?
Yeah. I know like Sebastopol does that with some of their city parking lots. You buy a parking permit and then if you show up and somebody's parked in your parking spot, you call the police and they come and they tow them. So that means it's your spot, you paid for it. And I want, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Matt. I like the fact that we have a real project because all I want is for there to be some discussion because I think if you have a God-given right to put in, and I use 30 because that's kind of out there, but if you put 30 in and you, wasn't a discussion as to how they were going to deal with parking. Because I mean, it could be a situation where Matt is talking about. If the solution is 10 of these units are going to be reserved for seniors that aren't going to have cars so that if 10 years from now, there's a big argument as to how come we didn't do parking while the developer put in units for seniors and they didn't have seniors renting? And so, so happens you're here and your car got towed by the cops because we had a one-hour limit. Well, guess what? 10 years ago, we had this discussion and, you know, it was dealt with, so.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on this one? No? Okay.
The only other thing, my name's Colette Sanchez. I'm part of the consulting team. But the only other point for this one was we discussed the boundary, the footprint of this downtown Main Street and what the northern, so whether we wanted to potentially go more north with it. So the northern terminus.
Right. So, yeah, thank you, Colette, for bringing that up. So you see now we have it identified as the northern extent of this prospective zone, general plan designation. I'll be calling it general change, though, because there will be corresponding zone changes to go with any of these general plan amendments as being Commercial Street. But there is an opportunity, obviously, to extend it further, further north, up past the brewery and the burger stop and the gas station at Sherwood. Once we get past Commercial Street, we have, of course, the lot that we would all love to see some type of development happen on across from the Van Hotel. The lots are a little bit different in that typically the buildings, you know, do have some space to provide parking. And so the idea may be that we could either extend the Main Street mixed-use further north or possibly make use of the other mixed-use zoning that we haven't quite gotten into depth on and apply it to those lands on Main Street but north of the intersection of Commercial Street. But that's absolutely something to think about is to, if we want to extend the boundaries and the perspective change further.
Yeah. Some of those are fairly large lots and that we just dealt with, one with residents and back of commercial. So in a sense, we already are doing that. But, yeah, I'm not sure the details of which of those two mixed-use designations would be most appropriate there. But I like the idea of it being mixed-use up there, too. And stressing, we want as much as possible to have a commercial corridor kind of reserved for commercial. But, you know, when you have a large lot, you have some more flexibility.
And I don't want to put words into any of my fellow council members' mouths, but I think from conversations that I've had with each of you, I think it's pretty clear that we are all on the same page, that we recognize housing is a huge need in our community and we are looking for flexible ways to increase the housing stock and the opportunities for people to find creative ways to fit housing into places where they aren't right now. So I hope that's good with everyone, but that's, that would be the direction that I think that we would like to give to the planning.
When, you're going to discuss a little bit further north at a later time? Does that comment about a little bit further north?
I don't know that we are, so now would be a fine time.
Well, I was just thinking, you were talking about expanding it further to the north and over where Sun Cycle used to be. One of the concerns is about, because so many people are making that left turn about Sherwood Road, about anything going in on that right side, but we don't want to stay vacant forever. And there's that -- And there's that side street, one block behind the group up there.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if there would ever be, does the city own any property, or is there ever the possibility of maybe connecting from behind, so that it would create a safer access to any of those properties back in there for potential development?
I like that.
That's kind of working out.
I'm just planning to see.
Being a planner.
Just think about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
The nice thing about that Sun Cycle's property is they have so much room. If they did some more commercial development or even added mixed-use, they've got parking.
It's just that traffic safety issue.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for bringing that up. Moving on to the next one here, so page two, looking at the East San Francisco Barber Lane area. So again, this is an area that's been identified as predominantly a single-family residential, some duplexes. And the entire area is planned and zoned for commercial. And we talked to the council before about, you know, the issues that arise from that. And brought the question of, you know, what we're, by maintaining that commercial designation, what we're really saying is we're trying to phase out that residential neighborhood, and our vision is to see commercial businesses there as the primary use. And I don't have quite the background. Again, you know, really, we haven't gone through this actively comprehensively since And, you know, I don't know the history on what that is. It might go all the way back to the, you know, when we were primarily a railroad town. I'm not sure. But what we understood now is that's not the case. And so what we're looking to do is almost do what I would call a cleanup, where we're looking to modify the zoning to residential to match the actual use of the property. You do see on the picture that we have a couple islands in the middle that are currently being used for commercial purposes, and the recommendation is that they maintain that commercial zoning, recognizing that the existing land use there, that we do move the rest and do that cleanup and maintain that residential zoning designation.
So would that mean that those carve-outs, should those businesses that are operating there now were to close, a next owner or tenant could continue that commercial zoning? Or at that point, would it then convert to the surrounding residential zoning?
No, they would maintain their conforming status in commercial zoning. So if Jeff's Gas Appliances went out of business, someone else could come in there and make use of the property consistent with the commercial zoning.
So this is just an effort to make the zoning consistent with use, current use?
Absolutely. Right. So what this would do is if someone wanted to get a loan to say, build an ADU on their property, or otherwise fix up their residential structure, or even sell it to somebody, then they have the better ability to obtain those funds and make use for the benefit of the property. There are some problems when, you know, you're looking to get a loan and you're zoned commercial, and, you know, we certainly will write on the letter saying, hey, if your house burns down, you get to rebuild it. But sometimes that's not enough assurances for these zoning uses, or at least that's how it's been explained to me.
What if any commercial uses, like home businesses, are allowed in that residential zone?
In the C-1 district there?
Not in the C-1, but as you're proposing, it'd become a residential zone instead of a commercial zone.
Oh, right, right. And I just want to quickly mention, when we get to the policy part of this, we are, you know, asking council to support a fresh look and potentially look at expanding the allowances of home occupation, maybe up against some additional standards to ensure land use compatibility, neighborhood compatibility. But right now, when you look at our home occupation guidelines, it's really set up for kind of strictly like a home office setup, where you're not really looking to have the public there so much. But there is an opportunity to allow for, you know, some very sort of small mom-and-pop operations like bookkeeping or something, where you do have a couple people coming. But whenever you have the public coming to your house, then, you know, bill the code, ADA, and a bunch of other things can come up into play.
So I guess my question would be, changing it to residential, that wouldn't eliminate the possibilities for someone to say, have a daycare for two children in their home?
Yeah, state law allows for small daycares and residential stuff.
Okay. So this wouldn't be reducing anybody's opportunities to use their home for a small commercial enterprise?
Not at all. And again, concurrent with this, we're also looking to take a fresh look at expanding the type of businesses that you can have out of your home to, again, kind of bring that flexibility into play.
Any council members have comments? Anyone from the public have a comment on this potential cleaning up of the zoning?
Hi, Joanna Cicada with the NorCal for Health Project. And I'm just curious, what's adjacent to that, in the MG zone? My only concern would be if it's hazardous waste or that type of thing, where it could be a health hazard. Granted, everything is already the way it is, there's already residents there, but I'm just curious.
That's the mill.
What's your mill?
Oh, it's the mill? Oh, okay.
And spare times apply.
And then I, just to comment on the idea of keeping the commercial, commercial in there, if we're looking to try to do more walkable neighborhoods and having access to our daily needs met, which is, I think, one of the areas that we're heading towards, then those projects that are, you know, whatever they are now, they may in the future turn into maybe a neighborhood store or that type of thing. So I can see wanting to retain some commercial aspects in residential areas to be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm glad you caught it. So it's kind of accidentally getting that mix and creating that little bit of commercials in the residential neighborhood for something like a little store or something.
Accidental mixed use.
In general, I really like that idea. I remember there was something that came up a few years ago, where one of the people with a residence wanted to, I guess it was to sell it, or anyway, they were not able to get financing because they were a non-conforming use. It was a residence surrounded by residences, but it wasn't zoned residential, and we don't want that kind of problem to happen. And I really like the idea. Also opens up for accessory developing units, if they have enough square footage, that they can do that, which again, can give the opportunities for housing. Somebody has a big enough lot, they can add a residential unit, which they probably can't right now as a commercial zone.
I have another question, maybe, in the downtown commercial area where we're looking to go mixed-use, does that include like professional, so like if you have a law office or a doctor's office or something, not a clinic, but just a private, you know, private professional? What I'm envisioning is like down in Santa Rosa, where they have those old houses that has the professional down below, but they may be able to rent out the other rooms as private. Would that be something that would fit into that mixed-use down within the commercial?
It sounds like it. It's almost like a live-work unit.
Right.
You have your job downstairs, and you have your residential unit in the back or up on top.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on here, the third page, Locust Street Residential. So just to orient us for a second, we're at the, about at the intersection of Walnut and Locust Street, we have Blosser Lane Elementary School to the west, and then Bechtel School to the east there. This is, one of the properties in this area that was zoned industrial was Dave Watt's old nursery. And that land is actually zoned heavy industrial, although it's used for residential and previously was used for the nursery there. You also notice that the area to the north and the west includes the residential median density to reflect the zone change that the school presented and was approved. So what staff is suggesting, and again, this is more of a kind of on the cleanup end of things, again, which a lot of these are, is to rezone it to residential median density consistent with the surroundings.
So would that remove the possibility for someone to have a nursery again there at some point in time? But currently, there's no business happening there. I mean, we know Dave's business is not there, but there's nothing else going on.
I do not believe so, not that I'm there.
Just residential.
Yeah.
Have we heard from the school about whether or not they ever plan to build there?
No, no. I haven't had any recent conversations with the school district, but I was hoping to, certainly when the new superintendent came in, I did alert him to that. And what I was told was that the school board didn't have interest in that, but I'm not sure the reasons why. And I think I'd like to meet with the superintendent again and see if there's interest in me participating in a meeting to have discussions on it. Because again, from our perspective, and we're being a little selfish in that we recognize the value of housing, we went through the exercise of the school district to rezone that land, and just want to make sure that it's clear what that opportunity presents to them, and certainly it's their property.
So is that property that the school district, and there's one acre in there that is owned by a private person, I think the school district has all, is it eleven acres and a private person has one?
No, that rezone was strictly on the school's own property.
Only on theirs?
Yeah.
And so is there residential mixed-use on their portion, or is that what R stands?
We went to R2 from industrial.
Multi-family.
Okay.
Yeah, so what's nice about the R2 is that it has some good flexibility in it, is that's going to be the word of the night. So if someone could come in there and look to request a subdivision from council and build single-family homes, whereby, right, they could go and put in apartments or...
So you're proposing that that currently industrial zone would be the same as the school district?
Correct.
It's not a great place for industrial or a major commercial use, because it's kind of off the beaten track.
Though it was a nice place for a nursery.
It was a wonderful place for a nursery. It's true.
Anybody from the public have comments on this one?
And real quick, where the city planner's got the zoning coded up, and general agriculture is actually a conditional use in the R2, so as far as reestablishing a nursery, yes, with a conditional use.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody out there, comments on cleanup? Nope. Jean? I saw you thinking.
Yeah, but for some reason, a lot of people talk to me about stuff. The other question I had was the railroad. Someone said that the cars, the railroad vehicles, that used to be parked back out behind what is now, I guess, spare time's new property over there, have been moved to be down towards Safeway along there. I didn't go past there to observe it myself. Is that so? They considered it a problem, problematic for people using it for temporary housing, that were unhoused. Has that...
Yes, but I think that's probably a conversation to have at a regular council meeting during public comment, since it doesn't tie into the zoning.
Okay.
But it's a good question, and I'd be happy to talk to you, as I'm sure any of the council members will be.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, I think. So now we're at the former hospital site, Office State Route 20, near Medellin, from Medron Street. So we're capturing the entire parcel that included the old hospital, as well as the property on the corner that supports the existing doctor's office. So those properties are currently zoned public service, recognizing the former use, understanding that we have a brand-new, wonderful hospital. The old hospital has been demolished, that site remains vacant. We've been working with Arnie Mello and others, other representatives of the property, and sort of asked them that, you know, would you be interested in changing the zoning of your property for the benefit of seeing some type of new development there? And the answer was yes. They have not told me a specific development in hand yet, but right now, you know, there are some folks talking about potentially doing some type of housing project there, very much in the idea that they should, I think, be premature to try to say anything specifically is going to happen there. So, but again, to help facilitate some type of appropriate development at that location, staff's recommending that we rezone it from public service to residential median density, recognizing that there's a doctor's office on the corner, kind of a cleanup, one of the cleanup ones, we would go from public service to commercial general.
Suprina?
When you say commercial general, I think C-1, C-2. What is commercial general? What does that mean?
Commercial general is a land use designation, and I put down that it'd be community commercial, which is C-1 as the zone. And one thing that's sort of missing from this, it's surrounded by an area that's administrative office, CEO zone, which is really limiting zone and probably should be, I mean, I think it might be generally captured in some of the policy. That's, that zone, the city should consider either eliminating that zone or changing it into something else, because it's intended to support the hospital, and it's intended to limit the uses for those that would be associated with the hospital, and maybe making that area C-1 as well, the surrounding area C-1 rather than the administrative office or CEO zone.
I guess my only question would be, why go commercial general and why not go mixed-use? So that you would have the opportunity to also have residential in that lower triangle?
I think, isn't there an occupied doctor's office?
Yeah, so again, the simple thought was just to match the zoning up with what was already there.
Got it.
But as far as the old hospital site, you know, again, I think if the property owner's representative said, hey, we have someone inviting to do a mixed-use development, then I think they're going to be sitting here in front of you going, hey, allow me to put that zoning on the property and support, you know, that development.
I just wanted to ask, isn't there already, isn't there another medical offices and labs, not labs, but like x-ray and stuff, at the very southwest corner or not? Is that still there?
It's gone.
It's gone?
That portable building that...
Oh, is it portable? Okay. So that entire section, other than the little triangle up to the east side there, is almost entirely vacant now?
Yeah, just on the north end is the clinic. No, west end, Poplar, across the way, but it's not in that, in that, in that.
Yeah, across the street, that's the Little Lake Health Center. Okay. And then to the north, isn't there also still a suite of medical offices?
Correct.
That's what I think John was referring to? The CEO, whatever that zone is. We should probably look at that, too.
Thank you, and we want to. And that's not part of tonight's presentation, but to, again, repeat what John was alluding to, is it may be that, since the hospital site's not there, that that CEO zoning is now outdated. And what the potential recommendation to council may be is to eliminate that zoning, and then those properties that currently have the CEO, drop, you know, a commercial zoning on them that would allow for, you know, the uses that are already established, but then provide greater flexibility of allowable uses beyond what the CEO zoning allows.
Suprina?
I just want to make sure I understood on the southeast corner down there on the bottom. It's my understanding that we're going commercial general because the existing use is commercial general, but to the mayor's point about housing, if we're being visionaries and thinking ahead, isn't it possible to give it more than one designation, so that should there be an interest later, they don't have to go through an elaborate process, and we've already established that residential could go in there as well?
Yeah, so again, the mixed... Yeah, so again, the mixed-use zoning are taking shape, but yes, absolutely. We could drop a mixed-use zoning designation on, and in theory, I'd safely assume that the doctor's office would do want to be allowable uses, but again, that's being crafted. But with that assumption, yeah, we could put the, say, the mixed-use general down on there, and not only would it allow for the use that's already established, but it would provide the flexibility for residential uses.
So there wouldn't be anything detrimental to them if we put mixed use there? There's no impact to them?
No, I'd probably have a discussion with the property owner, but.
But there shouldn't be.
From a planning perspective, like, it's like there's just a red flag right off the bat. No, I'm not coming anything off the bat.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. And then you'll notice that, of course, we left the park, the city's park, out of that, and it would maintain the public service designation.
That's that strange.
That's the leftover triangle.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
That part.
Would Matt's Anita ever cease to exist if, depending on the, would that end up being a, if they end up putting development up there, would that still be a city street, or is there potential that would be abandoned with it?
That apparently goes with the doctor's office property.
So it's not a city street?
I don't know the history on that. No, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Not that I'm aware of. It's not a city street. It's on the other end.
But it dead ends at the park, and you can park there, right?
There are areas and boulders there, never been.
And you can't park on the left, but you can park on the right, not in the doctor's office parking, but.
Correct, correct. There's a small little area there that's assigned for parking with city signage.
Right, okay.
You have a, the Howard Foundation doesn't have a plan yet for whoever's dealing with that property, but you're kind of envisioning a multifamily planned development kind of thing there, or senior housing complex or something like that?
Yeah, the conversations with the property representatives have been, you know, if you decide that you come, that there's a certain person who wants to purchase the property and develop it in a certain fashion, you know, let us know, because there may be an opportunity to accommodate that development through a proposed rezone. But no, nothing's been, no information's been shared with me the one way or the other.
They're still looking for a buyer.
Yeah. So this proposal would.
There's been a lot of, like, talks, but nothing.
Yeah, but if zoning you're proposing would enable that future kind of thing.
But again, we could be here two months from now getting more information from the property owner and potentially presenting something like this.
Anybody in the public have comments about this one? All right, we'll move on.
So we're on page five here. There's a large vacant property, approximately 15 acres on the north side of Bechtel Road, near its intersection with State Route 20. This is the property on the other side of the creek, behind Burger King, for instance. It's across from the subdivision that Mr. Mitchell put in. And the city has envisioned this property to support a through road that would ultimately connect Bechtel to Railroad. You know, that was envisioned a long time ago, and it's been in planning documents going back decades. It's certainly predated the bypass, but in staff's perspective, having that north-south route would still present some value to the city. It could be, again, having another north-south route for emergency evacuation use, and it also could further alleviate some of the traffic congestion on State Route 20 and Main Street, both now and into the future.
So a connector route would go east of the creek and behind Safeway to connect to Railroad?
East of the creek and behind Safeway.
No, it goes in at Railroad, is the way it was envisioned originally. Go through Peter's property, old property.
I crossed the railroad tracks, and we tried with the southern terminal of the railroad. That's how it's shown on the planning documents.
Yeah, okay. That's behind, yeah, okay.
But to get there, we got to get some development on the property, most likely. It's been zoned industrial for quite a while. You may recall that we received that presentation from the group out of Canada about potentially doing the aquaculture cannabis farm and manufacturing.
Aquaponics.
Yeah, nothing came from that. I had not been able to get a hold of property owners, but previous discussion, when sort of the cannabis idea fell through, they were very much interested in doing some type of residential development or possibly sort of a light commercial development. So we do show a recommendation to go from industrial general to general mixed use to create another opportunity to build housing in our community. And then, again, as part of that development, we would be looking to fulfill that through road that's been envisioned for quite a while.
I don't know this for a fact, but I have always been told that that's an earthquake area in there, and the Saragid used to own it, but that's the reason why that nothing is ever happening with it is because of the earthquake, so.
Yes, so you're right, again, earthquake fault does appear to go through that property, so that would create some development limitations. There would be, you know, first state law, they do a geotechnical report, identify where the fault is. Geologists would identify a recommended setback or additional building provisions to encroach upon that, the actual fault line. But even with that situation correctly identified, there still would be quite a bit of potential for development on that.
I think it's one of our, this is, you know, there wasn't anything in the literature that said it was a fault.
Yeah.
I do think that the fault is further west. I'm checking and verifying that right now.
Is the area to the east there, you know, just off of Shell Lane, is that, I know it's industrial zone, is it, in gray, is it, I'm sorry, losing my voice, is it in reasonable use as industrial? I'm also just wondering if we should ever get more industrial uses wanting to locate here, do we still have space for industrial uses if we're rezoning it as part of the line?
Yeah, right, that's a very good question. John, we can certainly follow up with, and get that, those numbers, but do we have it already, the current amount of acres that represents industrial zones versus, say, residential?
C1, or, I don't have that there.
We can follow up and provide that information.
I mean, there hasn't been, like, enormous demand for a new industry to come and go, and we're holding on to the ones we already have, if we can keep them. But that area isn't really heavily used now, is it? The area in that triangle to the east?
The gray area just east of this proposed?
Yeah, no, I'm hoping someone else.
Spare Time.
Is using it for a bunch of storage. Yeah, it's not being used as, like, heavy industrial, it's, I'm going through my mind, and I'm not speaking because I'm not exactly sure what I think is absolutely correct.
And is there a potential land use conflict if it were to get more heavily used with residential, right, in this property?
Yeah, there certainly is. I mean, you got to be careful about putting any type of residential use of any density up against heavy industrial land. You know, the thought would be is to try to deal with that compatibility issue, is we'd likely look at extending that envisioned connection road along the eastern side of the property. There is a burn that's built up along the eastern side of the property as well, and, you know, so, and then, you know, potentially look at presenting some type of addition up or between the uses. But, you know, it wouldn't be unique to other existing situations that we have throughout the city. And as far as, like, maintaining that sort of industrial, or even sort of a job versus housing balance, there are some other projects in the work, like the rezones to the north of town, that effectively might become industrial as well. And there are some policies within the general plan that talk about, you know, maintaining that balance and piece of any.
I think it's a good, a good question that Matt brings up, and I do, I do think back on that rezone that council approved over by Willets Redwood and the school. And, you know, I, I think we really do need to be cognizant of creating hassles for our existing industrial businesses if we increase residential density, and they've been there for 40, 50 years, and suddenly they have residents complaining that they're too noisy.
Right.
And, you know, I wouldn't, I know we went the other way on that one, but I do think it's something to really keep in our minds. We don't want to create problems for, you know, the few industrial users that we still have in the city, so I would be, I would be concerned, a little concerned about that one.
I hear that.
Anybody out there? Lila.
Just a question of what, how big is that parcel?
It's about, it's about 15 acres. That parcel's about 13, but we're also including the property on the corner that has a residence, and maybe that's less of a concern with the compatibility of the industrial side. I think what I heard with that discussion was really pointed at the large parcel.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll understand that concern, and that'll, that'll help us in developing some ideas and possibly changing recommendations.
Thank you.
Continuing on, page six here, this is the South Main Street. So, again, a lot of us driving this process is looking for opportunities to create housing and increasing those opportunities. So we're on, we're in South Willets, and we're behind Willets Power and O'Reilly's Auto Parts, and this is a property that Mike Garrity owns. And in talking to Mike, he may be interested in either presenting some type of housing development back there, or possibly, you know, bringing in a developer to do a housing development. Mike's not sure what he wants to do, you know. You know, I've agreed to talk to him, introduce him to some other folks that he might be able to ask some questions to. But what Mike said is like, yeah, go ahead and keep, you know, keep it moving forward and the discussion there, and we'll keep checking in with him and, of course, many other property owners. But that's what led us to identify this parcel. Doesn't front Highway 20 Main Street there. Again, it's behind those existing commercial uses up against the creek, but it does have other residential uses to the south of it, so it's not a spot zone by any means. There's also, it may be that, that lane that runs along the northern side of the property also could be a potential location for a bridge to connect over to Locust Street. And so, again, just kind of calling out that perspective improvement as well, and giving easement for that future improvement as well as part of the new development.
Well, knowing Mike, if he's got plans to do something, something's going to happen, and if he's supportive of moving that to residential, I think it's a great idea.
Lucas doesn't show up on this slide.
No, it's a little bit further. Okay, moving on, page seven.
Anybody out there, comments about this one? Okay, sorry.
So we're calling this the South Hale Creek area. We're basically at the southern end within the city limits. The Hale Creek subdivision is directly north. The majority of this property that's on here is owned by Dave Lovell. And in talking to, so, again, this land presents an opportunity for higher density residential uses. We probably would be looking at making another connection over to Highway 20 with a bridge over the creek there. And in talking to Mr. Lovell, he didn't have tremendous interest in building housing there right now, but thought that future generations may enjoy that flexibility, and he lent his support to looking at modifying the zoning to allow for a higher density residential within those lands. So again, this is being borne out of looking for more opportunities to create housing.
I like the idea of more housing, but I've been thinking about, like, we're kind of putting them so far down on the south without any walkability to services. How can we create a vision where there could be services that could potentially go in along the street facing, I guess it's not Main Street, but, you know, the Highway 20 there? Just forward thinking about how we might be able to make that another type of walkability community, is there, do you have ideas on that?
So it's certainly, you know, the Hale Creek Trail is about there, and then that's going to connect with the rail trail, so there will be that connection as far as it goes. But then I was also wondering if your comment was considering, like, you're far away from commercial services, and maybe we want to have a pocket of commercial in there or something that's close by, too?
All those people, well, many people who are down on Holland's Lane, who don't have access to transportation or even a little bit further, a lot of those people are unsafely walking, who don't have transportation, or even over in the Harris Manor area, and I would hate to see residential continue to grow in that area without a plan of how people can get to the things that they need, whether it be additional bus stops and transportation, or space where commercial can potentially build up, or food and doctor's offices and those sorts of things would have opportunities for growth, and that.
Right, I think that's a great point, even some kind of small commercial carve-outs that, you know, eventually there could be a market down there.
Something.
If housing did go in that area so that people don't have to get in their car or to drive down to Safeway or Mariposa, they'd have, you know, a corner market where they could pick up some sundries.
You've kind of seen them evolve down in Yucayat over by Laws Avenue and down at that end. We've seen some pockets of storefronts, corner stores that have formed over there to kind of meet the fact that not everybody down there has access to transportation.
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking about that.
Okay.
Just be thinking about it.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to echo what they say, because it's fairly common to be driving down this stretch, especially in the evening hours, and you're watching people walking down.
Yeah.
And it's kind of scary. You know, it's either send them down 101 or send them through Harris Manor, which is probably safer, but.
Right.
You don't even have a safe bus card out there.
I mean, I like the infill idea of filling in that area.
Right.
But just give options for them to be able to have services down there as well.
Right. Okay, good, thank you.
Lila.
I'm wondering what would happen with Highway 20 there with coming off the freeway and trying to get out of the side streets? I've seen people sitting there waiting for a long time and adding cars coming from the other side, especially the way that curve is off the freeway. Just, I suppose you'd need to do some modification to the road there? I don't know.
County transit, but.
As growth happens, I would anticipate speed limits would come down.
Speed limits don't necessarily stop speeding. But that's true, that, I can't think of the name of that street, but there's quite a bit of backup on people coming.
Walker.
Yeah, Walker, yeah. And it's a little dangerous there, I don't know. And if there's a lot more development, it would get more dangerous.
But they told us that traffic was going to be so reduced after the, so there shouldn't be that much traffic on Highway 20 now.
That's what they said.
All right.
Thanks.
You're not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for those excellent comments, and I'm sure we're already thinking of some ideas here. Matt? Yes? We're onto you, buddy.
We are.
Yeah. So, so again, as I mentioned earlier, so there's sort of the staff-generated ideas for rezoning, and then we also presented the opportunity for property owners to present their own ideas. And Mr. Gomes here was looking at rezoning the property next door, which includes, you know, a handful of lots here, that used to be John's place before it burned down right across from City Hall here. And this is the site where Matt's envisioning the mixed-use development that he was alluding to earlier. And so he's made the request. And so, he's made the request to rezone these properties from Commercial General to General Street Mixed Use. And so, we have that as a recommended rezon to move forward as well. And Matt, I don't know if you want to share anything more on your development there or any other thoughts at this point?
At some point, I'd like to bring some of the sketches that we've done, some 3D sketches. We've compiled a bunch of different ones, different layouts, different parking, different ways people might move about, different ways the apartments would work and lighting and just a whole, maybe five or six different ways. It'd be neat to put that out there and see what people thought about it. Potential pitfalls that we're not seeing or something like that, or maybe we don't, maybe we hit it off.
Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll work with you on that one and there will be an opportunity to, to get that feedback. But, you know, again, we'll, we'll be working with Matt and appreciate the fact that we have a real, you know, prospective development to, you know, as we work through creating this, this tool. And, you know, we get to know what, what need, what your needs are and then, you know, look to, to fine-tune what we're trying to come up with. And what we're trying to come up with is, again, that mixed-use zoning. We may be looking at allowing an extended building height, looking at, you know, reduce parking standards, you know, setbacks, et cetera. But again, applying it to, to the areas outside of the Main Street such as this parcel.
I'm just trying to understand the language. When you talk about commercial general versus general mixed use, explain the differences between the two, because I, I'm still struggling. Definitions.
Yeah, and, and, and John, you can step in here too, but I mean, obviously the big component is, is presenting the opportunity to allow for residential.
Residential, really, okay. Okay. Different terminology.
I, I think that any zoning change that is driven by the property owner, so long as it, you know, meets city standards and is, you know, run through your department and is copacetic with our codes and ordinances, I think is terrific. And I think that hearing from the owner for the intent is key to making good zoning choices. So, I appreciate this.
Get ready, John. All right, so Jay Frazier, a local contractor, has or is in the process of purchasing, pursuing this property on the corner of North Street, Raymond Lane, and it's sort of an alley-type street known as Harms Lane. It's currently has a residential low-density zoning. And I don't believe Jay actually identified or changed his zoning, but what he identified is what he wanted to do with the property, which is provide for a number of housing units on it. And, you know, typically you would need to look at subdividing your property or potentially rezoning it to R three or, or multifamily designation. But something that, that we discovered recently is there's a state law called Senate Bill nine. And it was really, it wasn't clear that it was applicable to the city of Willets. And there was quite a bit of outreach to HCD at the state to understand the nuances of the bill and really to understand and ensure that if, if it applied to, to Willets or not. And, you know, recently with the assistance of our consultants on this project, because again, the state doesn't have it mapped out and their, their definition is not abundantly clear. But John, through his GIS expertise and the data that he was able to pull from the census, came up with some information that led staff to understand that this SB nine really does apply essentially citywide. And attempted to confirm that with HCD. Again, they wouldn't give us a solid answer, but then there's been some, some other developments that in staff perspective make it abundantly clear that this SB nine law does apply to Willets. And the plan is, is that staff's going to come forward to council as an informational item and, and give you an in-depth overview of SB nine. And then moving forward beyond that, work with the real estate groups, property owners and everyone to understand the opportunities to build housing within their existing residential lots. So, I'm gonna ask John to, to talk a little bit more about that because it does come into play for, for discussions we're having with the land settlement update. But I'll just, let me just say for Jay there, because of the provisions allowed under SB nine for the type of housing he wants to do on this property, he does need the benefit of these laws. And John, if you don't mind, if you could speak a little bit more on SB nine, please.
This is agree, I'm not an expert on SB nine, but where, where the area is identified as being urban by the census and most of Willets is an urban cluster, there's a few areas that aren't included, but we're told that where the city, where, where the city is identified, proportions of cities identified as being an urban, being urban areas that are zoned for single-family uses within the city are, the property owner is eligible to bring forward an application for ministerial development of two primary units and with that accessory dwelling units are available as well. So, within a single lot, a property owner is eligible to bring forward a ministerial, bring forward a project for ministerial approval, subject to meeting specific requirements for up to four units, two primary, two accessory. And/or to subdivide a property under certain ownership limitations. I think that the property, the applicant has to be the property owner living on the property. It can be subdivided and in the two lots, two, a, a primary unit can be put on each and an accessory dwelling unit put on each. So, that's, that's the state law that, that, you know, that basically applies within Willets. So, it has to be zoned, zoned single-family, can't be, can't have wetlands, can't have or must, must comply with flood requirements. There's certain hazard or resource limitations that throw it out of the ministerial process, but in, in the case of Mr. Frazier's site, he, he asked in his land use request that he be able to do two primary, two accessory dwelling units. And based on everything that I see, that is allowable now under SB nine.
So, that's a lot to digest. And again, the intention was, once we found out this, to, to bring forward an exclusive item, informational session on SB nine and how that applied to the city. But recognizing the path we're on with this one, it felt appropriate to, to bring that And, you know, also, at the last meeting discussing this, we were sort of talking about, you know, the idea of creating more housing by increasing the density within our existing residential neighborhoods. And we had a good conversation about sort of where we would strike the balance on that. It, it may be that SB nine did that for us.
In case people don't know, the ministerial would mean it's essentially allowed by right. You don't have to get a conditional use permit. You don't even have to come to city council. The staff have to make sure it meets the standards and then it's, is that, is that correct?
Correct. And I mean, there still are, you still have to have a certain size, I mean, there's, there are limitations involved. And we're, we'll make it a priority to come back to council and get some good information and try to get people to understand that. That's a, that's a major one, it's a game changer. And I don't mean to present it lightly.
Yeah, so it applies to many other places in the city potentially, same, same.
Essentially your residential areas. But, you know, I'll, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to get some good information and see how that's played out in other jurisdictions. You know, I think at first when it came out that, you know, there was a great concern that you're gonna have people, you know, building right on top of you. And I don't know that it's, you know, being, being used right for that. I can tell you, there's a few people that are gonna be anxious to make use of it. So, the, we're on page ten here.
Lila, I'm sorry, one question for the audience.
Is it SB nine, is there a minimum lot size for the starting piece?
There, there isn't. I think it's the, it can't result in a lot size less than twelve hundred square feet. If, if the parcel's being divided, the parcels, one parcel, it can't be, they should be just about fifty fifty or sixty forty, but the, the, if you have a five thousand square foot lot, I believe that SB nine, to the extent you meet all of the other requirements that are in the law, you would be able to split the lot into two, twenty-five hundred square foot lots.
Yes. Do we have a minimum square foot for the house footprint? I think, I can't remember, probably asked this once before. Do we have a minimum square foot?
There is a minimum in SB nine, I think it's eight hundred and twenty, somewhere around.
I think each unit, each unit has to be at least eight hundred square feet. But as far as if you just had a vacant lot and you're looking to build a home, like, how big does that house have to be?
No, what's the, what's the least that it has to be? So, like, can, can you put a tiny home on there that's only three hundred square feet? But it sounds like.
Potentially, but again, building code dictates some things that are, is ultimately gonna tell you the house has to be a certain square footage. And I don't know if it's three hundred or something, but you do need to follow building code. But no, the city doesn't have like a provision that says any house you build has to be at least six hundred square feet. I think you get there through the exercise of going through the building code.
Okay. With that, that last property that you were talking about, I know that often if you try to drive through that street, there's a lot of branches from trees and what, it's not very well-maintained.
It's all gone.
It's all gone?
Yeah, they got cleared, they're clearing the block.
I guess I was gonna ask, is the city gonna be responsible for any street upgrades through there with the addition? I'm not sure how many units are going in there. Is it two or houses going in that space?
Harms Lane she's asking about.
Yeah, I'm reading through here to see, I believe he wants to build two primary units and two accessory dwelling units, so there'd be a total of four units within the property. And I'm not sure if Jay's envisioning those taking access off of Harms Lane, if that would meet city standards or if it'd be off of Raymond and North Street, I'm not sure.
Well, I can hear that you probably would need to upgrade the parking or the no parking signs or make it no parking because it's definitely needs the fire lane aspect of it in order to get the fire department in there.
I'll tell you, it's more accessible today than it was three months ago.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a one-way street?
No, it's two-way.
But is it, but is it possible with two cars?
No.
Because I was gonna say, because I always remember it being so narrow.
And, and the residents that lived along the sides in the past had a tendency just to park their cars there.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know even on Raymond Lane, it can be tricky trying to get through there both directions. So, I'm just curious, as, as development is starting to grow in some of these areas where the streets aren't very wide, if there are any, any conditions or rules about, about the width of our streets as we move forward?
Right. In this situation, we, you know, it would be initiated by the city. It wouldn't, we wouldn't say, oh, well, as a provision of your development, you need to, you know, support these changes. But it may be that, you know, the city is part of, you know, some transportation studies would, would look to reconfigure and put signs up on harm line recognizing that development that's coming in. But it would be on us not to.
It would be on us to make sure that we include.
If you get some discretionary projects, like he wants to subdivide it beyond what SB nine allows administratively, then, then there's a nexus there and through the initial study and the evaluation.
But this, it wouldn't be a discretionary.
Correct.
This would just be on city to have a plan to address it over time.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from public?
Okay, so getting back into what we've been calling sort of the cleanup mode, we've got Brookside Elementary School and some of the property under their ownership that, that served to support the school has a residential low-density designation. We would like to change it to public service. Similar situation with Blosser Lane. Again, the, the school has some authority through the state. They can put schools down essentially on, on any zoning. In this case, it was done on industrial land, so that Blosser Elementary School outside the portion that they rezoned to residential median density still carries the industrial zoning. So, the thought was to clean that up and match it up with the public service, general plan designation. Then the next one here, bottom left, is the property that the California Conservation Corps is currently developing. This is exciting. We're gonna have, my understanding is we'll have a hundred permanent residents age eighteen to twenty-five living at this facility along with a, a number of staff. They'll be aligned right up next to the, the Willets Rail Trail, Rail With Trail. And so, that's gonna be a good influx of young folks into our community. That property's currently zoned as the industrial commercial general. And we'd be looking to, to rezone it to, to public service as well, to capture the fact that, that the state bought that property.
What's OR?
Oh, open recreation?
Yeah.
So, it's our open space zoning.
So, you're changing that to PS?
The open space is primarily, so this includes the CCC property plus Highway one oh one. Highway one oh one is planned and zoned for open space. And so, it's just suggesting to call it public service as well.
And then we have the, the new hospital site that has the commercial, commercial general zoning on it. And I need to have a conversation with Judson and see what his plans are for the surrounding area. This one was a little bit premature, but again, it may be a situation where we're matching up the public service designation recognition of the use of land use. But again, we'll have that conversation with the hospital ownership before making this suggestion, so this is a little premature.
If we did designate it public service and they decided later they wanted to put in residential units for nurses or whatnot, would that limit them?
Yeah, we would likely need to rezone the property again, so.
That's why this is premature.
Because the intention is, is if they do have plans to do something like that, then we, we would look to.
Do you ever see a situation where you have public service and residential? Or do you carve it out into little pieces? Do you ever see two designations?
There would be an opportunity to, to put residential up against that, yeah.
So, would it have two, two designations for the whole space? Or would you carve it out into pockets, like this is public and then this little section and this little box, for example, is residential?
I mean, you gotta be careful with split zonings. It's, it's not unheard of and it may be appropriate in this location. We could also ask them, you know, to survey those boundaries or.
I'm trying to understand how it works.
It's on the table and it is possible and it's, it's not unheard of to create split zone properties. Or, or, you know, they may look to, to subdivide it.
Jerry.
Does the public service designation affect them on the tax rolls as far as, I know that that was a question that they put the old hospital in, that it wasn't a longer a public service. And I know when I was talking to Arnie, that, that because they weren't public service, because there was no hospital anymore, the county wanted to.
Yeah, higher taxes.
It can be more associated with the ownership rather than the way you serve the zone. There may be some taxable components of the hospital, I mean, there, as it was, and I guess when, when they sell the property, I think that it would be reassessed based on the ownership.
I, I think we do need to look into that though, because I do recall Arnie telling me that the county hit them up for higher taxes after the hospital was no longer operating at that property on Main Street and it had not had a change of ownership. And yet the county had their hand out for more.
I think that's correct. I think that's correct as well, yeah.
It wouldn't be associated with the land use designation or the zoning being the use or the ownership. So the, the change in land use wouldn't, wouldn't affect that?
Okay, just the change in use use?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If it was, I guess, uh, they're not considering it public then. And so then the change in the use, they're, they're gonna wanna assess it according to the use.
Right.
Fair market value for potential use.
Yeah.
The, the Conservation Corps property, it, all those little strips, is that because of the, um, the trail area or what? Why is it...
It's all cut up because of the way that the land use is currently applied. The western, the two sort of north-south slivers, those are the open space recreation. The center portion is commercial general, where the, the bulk of the CCC will be located. And the areas to the north are, um, either open space or industrial. That's why it's, there's a bunch of different land use designations currently applied there.
So you're trying to get all, the whole area to be, um, the public service?
Yes, it is all owned by the state of California. The, the highway is there now and the CCC is being developed now, so public service seemed like the appropriate thing.
So I would just say again, as we have sort of seen tonight, having, um, zoning driven by the property owner is so helpful. So if the hospital has other ideas there.
We certainly don't wanna make, we wanna make sure that the hospital has room to provide all of the other buildings and services that they're planning into the future. So we don't wanna encroach on, on the space that the hospital needs.
Yeah, I should be sure that Judson wanted to do a coal-fired power plant or something. He'll be looking to accommodate in the future. All right, we're, uh, making our way through here. Appreciative of the conversation that's happening here. Um, so, uh, so they, uh, maybe talk a little bit quicker here. But, uh, we have, uh, down on the, uh, further east of us, off of East Valley, on the corner of, uh, East Valley, South Lenore, the facility that's operated by the county, I believe, Public Health has some offices in there. There's a sheriff's substation, um, so again, recognizing the civic use of the property, we would look to, to rezone it to public service. The prop, the next one is the Hale Creek Trail. Uh, this was property, um, that was provided to the city, um, and supports the Hale Creek Trail. There's no development in there, so we would look to, uh, to put the open recreation, open space designation on that land and reclamation of the, of the trail. And then we have the, the Highway twenty park, uh, future home of the Pinwheel. And, uh, again, this is a property that Caltrans provides to the city. A backline, State Route twenty was, uh, connected over to one oh one there, uh, Main Street.
Quick question about that one. If we change that designation to OR or to PS, are we, uh, restricting the city's ability to add parking at some future time or restrooms or anything like that?
No.
No? Okay, great.
That would also allow if you wanted some kind of community garden space to...
Jane, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, but that was just a little quicker than I expected. That's why she's up there and I'm back here. Yeah, I, I think that's important to look at, having, um, more areas that we can garden. So we can continue, so that we can work towards being more, uh, sustainable with our own food. And I think that's important. You've got, uh, food coming in, um, Highway one oh one, and that's it. And I remember our past sheriff was very concerned that if anything happened to those accesses, we have about three days' worth of food to keep feeding ourselves. So it'd be good to have more gardens.
Okay, um, page twelve here. There's a property, uh, that's got the heavy industrial zoning on the north side of Highway one oh one. It's currently used for grazing activities, so the thought was to rezone it to ag, recognizing, uh, the current use on the property. Um, the, the next one, uh, is a property that is currently zoned, open space. My understanding from talking to the previous community development director was that there's nothing, um, special about the property regarding, you know, natural resources or some type of development limitation that presented the open space designation, rather was used as a placeholder for the bypass. I don't quite understand that one, but, but there's a number of properties along, they didn't know quite where the bypass was gonna go and there was, that was used as a zoning designation to help ultimately support that.
So is that private land or public land?
Private land, I think for the most part. I'm not sure if the state had some of those lands at that time. Um, this property, uh, is now under, um, private ownership. And, um, David actually, David Willoughby has a application into us right now. Uh, and he's looking to go to ag and residential. Uh, our consultants got a little bit ahead of us on that one and that one wasn't supposed to be on Constance Docket either because we have an existing application likely pending for consulting.
Just the one in the middle?
The, yes, uh, East Hill Agriculture.
So would the existing, um, concept that's gonna come before us differ from your recommendation or what is slightly that?
Uh, he's looking to rezone a, a portion of the property to residential to support a handful of single-family homes. Uh, and then the backside, the northern end, would retain the, the agricultural zoning. And he does have two parcels. And so the idea would be to do a boundary line adjustment to, uh, have one parcel include the residential component and then the other part include the agricultural component. And the thought was, since there's an existing application, uh, that we're about to finalize, that, uh, it would come in independently of this exercise. I failed to articulate that correctly, obviously.
Around the time of the bypass, there was a lot of discussion about making sure that Willetts would have an opportunity on some of the, uh, land adjacent to the new highway to have signage that either welcomed people to our community or somehow advertised Willetts. Does any of this zoning change reduce, if, if there was a landowner who was receptive to that sort of thing, would this zoning limit the opportunities for that kind of signage? I know we still have Caltrans setbacks laws and all of that, but...
I guess we want that neon sign, you know?
We're not talking about that. We're talking about something twisted.
Yeah, digital billboard, story stories, alright, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
Slots here, tricky ones.
Good question. Let me refresh, uh, the, uh, rules governing billboards that are visible from a state highway. And, um, uh, we'll bring that into consideration.
I'm thinking of that new sign that Ukiah just put in with the big, you know, rusty metal U, something like that. If Willetts ever wanted to go that direction, we wanna make sure that we had.
Typically, the OTs allow a welcoming and gateway type of signage. If the proposal of land use zoning or land use designation is changed just to accommodate a advertising sign, that is what is frowned upon as illegal.
Got it, okay.
So if the underlying district allowed a billboard by right or a conditional use approval process, then that's okay. You just can't say, well, someone has wanted to put a billboard on their property to generate revenue, so we have a billboard zoning district that allows nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
Similar, the, um, uh, the property one fifty-one San Hedon Circle, um, had the open space designation for the reasons I alluded to earlier. But that property, I mean, was previously successful in rezoning their property to industrial. So, uh, this is a change that's already occurred. Moving on to page thirteen. Uh, the, um, there's a, a number of, uh, housing units that were built off of Madison Street. The property's own heavy industrial, we've looked to do a cleanup zoning and, uh, rezone it to residential median density and recognize the existing land use. Similar situation off of Bechtel Road, uh, where you have a property that's zoned commercial and is supporting a single-family, um, residence. So again, looking to clean up and match the zoning with the, you said, what we were doing in the, um, in the...
Where is that property?
Is that behind Charter School?
This is, um, right, off of Bechtel Road before you get to the intersection with Shell Lane? Uh, oh yeah, there's, uh, yeah, it's on the north side of the school. You can see the, uh, the soccer field. So, uh, Mr. Mitchell's subdivision is just outside of you on the east there. That's the road running in the property.
It's not the...
So to the west is the motel.
Oh, okay.
And behind it is the Charter School. There's two residences to the east there also zoned residential.
Just cleanup?
Yeah.
Oh, I know. Uh, there was a gentleman that had an auto repair place out of his house there.
Good summary.
Then, uh, then we have, um, uh, those homes that we all know, uh, that exist on the north side of State Route twenty as you're leaving town towards Port Rag. Again, they're all residential, um, the commercial zoning is still there, so it's a cleanup to recognize. Just, just on that one site, you know that, um, Andy has a heartache with that, trying to do code enforcement with that odd wide way and that parking lane and accumulation of vehicles. Is there any way we could add some language in that to post zoning district to address that?
Can you pull back for that screen?
As far as like the number of vehicles that could be parked in a residential neighborhood or something? Yeah, there's a lot of that. Some of those vehicles, questionably, are they operable and some of the commercial vehicles? Right, yeah, I, I, yeah, uh, I mean, absolutely, it, it wouldn't happen, you know, as part of the zone change, but it, it could be a direction to modify the, the zoning code, um, to deal with lighted situations like that and have a strong provision that we can clearly state, um, um, to enforce those types of situations.
This is in this area here?
Yeah, one of these properties, uh, towards the middle, I believe. We often have issues where they're parking within the Caltrans right-of-way, uh, as well as within their law. It appears to be, uh, sort of like, uh, like the gentleman you alluded to off of Bechtel that had the home auto shop, but there appears to be something going on.
Except that one was licensed. I don't think this one is.
Right. Just something to consider.
Manette, I don't know if this would be a answer or a solution to that problem, but the county of Fresno has a, a combining zone or an overlay district called the Neighborhood Beautification Zone that has provisions that specify parking, garbage accumulation, vegetation, and that sort of thing. So that could be...
And that, if that was crafted, that can be essentially laid over at any area that we wanna apply those conditions or conditional, uh, site standards onto. I wonder why you would say, well, this neighborhood, you get the beautification overlay district, but not the here, like, ah, sorry.
But I think here, it's the entrance to town. This is the entrance to town and I think the confusion there has been Flower Street wasn't necessarily, um, Highway twenty till later on. Highway twenty was Co Street. And, and then it, it was abandoned in favor of this and this was part of Flower Street.
Right, and then there used to be homes on where the Highway coming park is now. I'm just taking out the comment, but, um, it's about Taylor and then thank you for that, uh, comment about the entrance to town. So, um, we'll take, take note of that. Thank you.
One second, that has to, uh, used to have, uh, seventy-sixty-two.
What, what is this currently zoned and now it's going to be residential instead?
Uh, commercial general.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and then, uh, the last identified, uh, perspective, staff recommended rezone would be the fourteen seventy-one South Main Street. Uh, this is the property that's directly south of the, of the Charter School there. Uh, it has a residential zoning, uh, but it's used, uh, I believe for trailer repair, uh, commercial use, so we would look to...
There used to be a trailer park there when the, uh, when the Schwabys had their trailer business. There was trailers in the back.
Okay, alright.
Still complex.
Yeah, go ahead. I appreciate that, Jane. Okay, yeah. Uh, so now, uh, we, we were fully involved with properties within our existing city limits. Now we're moving on to, uh, areas to potentially include in our sphere of influence. Uh, again, I, 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 uh, just to kind of keep things moving here, I won't give the full background of the sphere's influence upon stuff that we did talk about it, but certainly if you have questions or need any questions, uh, please ask us. Uh, but anything that we do ultimately include in our sphere of influence, therefore, it's, it would be eligible to be annexed into the city. Again, any annexation application has to complete environmental review, uh, has to come in front of the, the city council and property owners get to vote on whether or not they, they wanna be included in there as well. So there, there's quite a few steps that you have to go through. But in order to be eligible, uh, you do need to be included in our sphere of influence and that does allow us to extend services to the property.
And just to be clear to the public, sphere of influence is in no way land grab.
No, no. Uh, in, in some cases, it, it does represent some, some real development potential and we could think, you know, maybe in the next ten years, we could see a property owner requesting annexation. In a lot of cases, um, it's, um, us saying and letting the county know that, look, any development that happens in this area is of concern and could affect the, the city and we want it explicitly known that, um, you know, we, we need to be a part of, uh...
We need to be at the table.
Exactly, yeah, thank you. Uh, so, the first one is, is the property, um, Kitty Corner to, to Brown's Corner. And this is a property that the county rezoned to R three. It has a church on it. I don't know if it's being used as a church, um, but that's my understanding of the last. There's a professional office in there right now. Thank you.
Isn't that where Cure is?
Uh, Cure is just to the north, uh, in the White Top Building.
Ah, got it, okay.
So this again is outside the city limits and, um, the county zoned it to R three, uh, um, high-density residential, recognizing that it was directly, uh, adjacent to the city limits. And upon being provided with services, could be developed with multifamily housing. So kind of running with, with, you know, the, the county's initiative, uh, we would look to include this property in our sphere of influence.
And what's on, what's on the property now?
A, a building that was formerly used as a church and is now used as a professional office.
Yeah, I think it was the Nazarene Church and now it, there's a sign that says tax, taxes or, or something like that.
This big white building is sealed, that helps.
Even though the county's got a zone on three, um, it would not be suitable to be developed unless it's hooked up to city services, would it?
Right, right. Uh, you know, at this point, they'd be relying on well water and a septic tank. Uh, parcel that size, you're maybe looking at putting a single-family home on there. But, um, upon being annexed into the city and extending services, it could be developed.
But I'm assuming that the church area there probably has city water because of the PJ Heath.
Uh, I think, I believe you're right, uh, but, but we would be disallowed from providing additional extensions to support, um, you know, something like a multifamily house.
No growth.
Huh?
No growth without annexation, right?
We, 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 county's got the land, we got the water in the city.
And actually, the street is actually in this, uh, in the county. Mier Mill is the county, yeah. That's actually, when you look at it right there, that's the city limits in that intersection. And, because we used to have accidents there and we'd have a, whose is it?
And again, you know...
But Hannah's, Hera's Manor is in city limits.
Yeah, but it's here...
So across the street, it's not, but...
So the county's there.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. Wild, okay.
So it, uh, just a reminder, again, you know, when we talk about adding properties to our sphere of influence, it doesn't change your tax bill, it doesn't change your zoning. You're still going to the county to be in building permits, you're still underneath the provisions of their zoning code. So it's, it really is just that, a plan and boundary at that point. Uh, the next one would be the area, uh, at the, uh, east of the terminus of the city limits off of East Valley Street. Uh, there's a number of properties that are currently used for agricultural and residential purposes. Then you also have the, um, the county Mendocino yard there. Uh, then you also have the, um, the county Mendocino yard there. Um, and I think, I think, um, you know, what was really, uh, real interest, again, this, a lot of this is being driven by looking for opportunities to create more housing for our city. Um, you know, there's some development potential upon these existing residential lots. But, um, LAFCO understand that they like orderly boundaries and so we did extend that out to, uh, recognizing the development patterns that exist to the, to the east and a little bit south and to the north. Again, not all those properties recommend, recognize, uh, development potential, um, of the residential nature, but, um, you know, our understanding is LAFCO is going to appreciate extending that sphere of influence to an orderly boundary that recognizes this yellow line that you see here.
Wasn't this property on one of the earlier discussions about zone changing also? I thought-
Um, we would be looking to prezone the land.
Okay.
Um, but we wouldn't have the, the ability to rezonate because it would still remain in the county. Any rezoning would happen to occur by, by the county.
Got it, okay.
There is the, the county sheriff's facility just on the inside of the city limits that was on an earlier slide.
Thank you, that's what I was thinking of.
And there's, one of these is county owned and so that if it's annexed, the public service will apply to that. The county has zoned a portion of this high, uh, high density residential, so we would, I would assume that it would be high density residential, then possibly lower density residential and industrial to the furthest east adjacent to, you know, of his highway.
Industrial or open space?
These uses right here are, uh, industrial or heavy commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Locust Street area, um, oh.
Nope, missed broken link.
Um, what, uh, so this is the area south of Della Avenue, um, to the west of the city limits, essentially on the, the opposite side of the creek there. And, uh, this is quite a bit of land, 145 parcels, 325 acres. A lot of the land is, is already developed out, um, but there, uh, is quite a number of, of large pieces of vacant land or, or land, you know, large pieces that are serving one or, one or two single family homes. The, the, uh, the county has this land, everything that you see on here is zoned suburban residential. And so the county has a plan for residential uses. And, um, you know, I recall when I was working at the county, um, that they had envisioned and zoned it suburban residential with the thought that the city would extend services out to it and again, match up vacant flat land with city water sewer services and, and therefore this would be, you know, the growth area for the city. And this was something that was envisioned, you know, 50 plus years ago. So, um, you know, naturally, we look to explore that, um, and, and, and take the torch on the past efforts and thoughts.
Do most of these properties have city water already based on the-
A lot of them do have city water, a couple right up against the, the northern, um, the southern terminus of the city actually have sewer as well. I, I think where we were really looking, um, for, at housing opportunities was more of these bigger properties towards the, the middle here that, that have flat land, um, you know, because of, um, um, it appears that there's, I don't know if it's a high water table or the soils type, they don't represent prime agricultural lands. Um, you know, they're relatively flat, they're adjacent to the city, uh, we do have water and sewer services extended down there to some, to some extent. Uh, it became an area of, um, exploration. And what we found out was that there's, you know, a decent amount of, of wetland conditions out in the area, that there's, uh, poor drainage. And so although it does represent some development potential, um, there are enough constraints that it's, um, you know, there, there are some, some certain limitations on it there. So again, uh, we, we are recommending, uh, to include it in our, our sphere of influence. Um, you know, it, it's not low hanging fruit in the sense that I don't think we would want to support, you know, a high density of development in that area without making some significant improvements to both Locust Street, possibly, um, uh, making a connection, uh, from Locust Street over to State Route 20. Um, you know, there would likely be, um, you know, some, uh, the need to, to do wetland mitigation type work. Again, not, not the things that, that a developer, you know, uh, looks forward to paying for, uh, when they do their housing development. So, uh, you know, I think one of the sort of themes as we're going through these, you're, you're seeing these large areas that, um, could be included in our sphere of influence. And again, we're, we're looking to, um, create opportunities to seek out, to, to see housing develop in our community and, um, it, it's a little bit of like a fishing expedition where we're sort of creating the Rolodex. And, you know, if, as we see some properties develop and I think we'll get to the policy section and we're going to have a, maybe a conversation on, on what type of growth that we want to see. Um, but it may be as, as certain parcels get developed, we say, okay, well, you know, that, that's good enough and, and, um, and kind of shut down the Rolodex, so to speak, if that makes sense.
Which way does it, does that one drain? Does it drain to the west or to the east?
Primarily to the east, there's a couple creeks that, um, um, make their way into, uh, oh, what creek is that right there?
So it's just pretty flat and it just kind of water lays out there?
Apparently there, there's quite a bit of clay soils too, um, you know.
And Locust Street intercepts some of the water, so piles up behind Locust and it's, and it's very flat, so it spreads out on the other side.
That's a big chunk of land.
Yeah, um, and that's what I was trying to articulate is that what, you know, staff's not recommending these because we think it's a good idea to fully develop out all these SOI areas. It's, it's more, uh, again, sort of creating, uh, a, a number of opportunities where a developer or property owner could step forward and, um, and, and present the type of development that the city wants to see.
To what extent does having the SOI, if it gets approved as an SOI for the city, does it constrain the county from, um, going ahead and, and for example, allowing more residential development that may or may not request city services?
Uh, no, they, they would continue to move forward with whatever, you know, their zoning allows up against their standards. So, uh, for instance, us including this area in our SOI wouldn't present a property owner from, um, going into the county and asking for, you know, a building permit for a single family home and putting in a septic system and a water support.
So the SOI designation doesn't protect the city's interest in, say, you know, designating some more, um, you know, but, um, fuller development of that with the city services? If, if the county can just keep going ahead and feast meal and things if they so choose, even, even with the-
Yeah, but if, if they decided to change the plan and go a different direction and wanted to create some type of, uh, you know, put a Costco out there or something like that, and they don't, but, uh, maybe that, I don't want to alarm anyone, but, you know, then again, like it would just, again, you're explaining like this is an area of interest to us, you know, you're putting all this development on Locust Street, there's no other way out. And really, all that traffic you're creating is all going to, you know, add up into our town. And, you know, so we're, we're taking, you know, a brunt of this larger development and, you know, you need to take that into consideration when, you know, planning for some development beyond, you know, the suburban residential intent that you have there now. Well, to believe it was a case scenario, a large commercial project like Dusty just mentioned, and it was against what we were envisioning, we would legally challenge it if that was our strong intent.
So there's some hook or some force behind the SOI designation that gives the city some say in matters, but, but essentially legally the county is still in control of what we do there?
Correct.
Yes.
LAFCO could also, and LAFCO should also encourage the city to enter into an agreement with the county that the manner in which development can occur within important areas of the sphere. Recall that might have more to add to the nature of those agreements or the strength of the agreements.
Yeah, there's, um, provision for city-county agreement for city-initiated spheres. It's not that the city and the county must meet to discuss, it doesn't require it.
And I guess it also puts the county on notice, so if they hypothetically put in a 100-unit subdivision out there, that ultimately they might maybe believe make a work with water and, or with sewer on septic, but, I mean, it's one of those things that eventually that, that high density is probably, the septic's going to fail and they'd end up on our lap anyway. And I think that's why the, the provisions are such, they're, they're supposed to talk to us. So that it's-
These are very much hypothetical scenarios, but it gets at the idea that, you know, a sphere of influence is more about just identifying land that you ultimately want to annex in the next 10 years or beyond and, um, you know, is identifying it as, like, any sort of changes in development patterns or ideas of this area directly affect us and, you should already know this, but we're officially letting you know that it's just a council member who's always put his hands on the table.
Quick question, um, how far are we into our program here this evening and how much more is ahead of us?
Um, I think we can get through, uh, the remaining SOI ones fairly quickly and then, uh, that puts us with a, maybe at a break to begin the policy discussion. And, um, we, you know, could probably spend a decent amount of time on policy.
Okay, uh, may I call for a quick break, five minutes, five minutes enough? Um, just to stretch our legs, get some fresh air. Let's resume.
Okay, uh, we are, I think, have moved on from the Locust Street area and we're now on, uh, page 18, uh, which we've identified as west, uh, State Route 20. So this is the area on either side of State Route 20 as you continue west of the city limits toward Fort Bragg. Um, you see, uh, Cropley Lane there, which is the current extent of the city limits and then traveling west, um, past the, um, former KOA campground. Um, and I think we grabbed that in, um, is that property that sounded industrial?
Where's the railroad, right, railroad goes just above the highway 20?
It's a little bit hard to see, but you can see the, um, the hatched blue lines here.
Oh, yes.
And that's representing the, the-
This is a nice piece of property too.
Um, yeah, we, we did have some conversations with some property owners that showed up to the, uh, to the open house. There is, um, uh, this is, again, this is all property that the, that the county has zoned, residential low density, residential suburban, and then I believe out where the, uh, the KOAs has the commercial zoning. Uh, so, uh, the thought again is there, there may be property owners that are looking to, uh, match up their land with city services and build housing. Uh, you do have some flat land along State Route 20 that does represent some, some tangible development potential. So I'd say that, that's land that, um, we could potentially see as an annex application. The, uh, the larger properties up in the, uh, up in the hills on the north side of State Route 20, um, there, the, um, these previous owners had entertained subdividing the land. Uh, but again, the, the requirement for wells and septic systems on individual lots could present quite a bit of a, a constraint to development. And I can see this area serving a, a variety of housing opportunities, um, you know, really, um, you know, a plethora, the, the full range on that area south of 20 on the flat land up against the creek. And then, and then maybe your more sort of estate, uh, homes, homes with an acre or two represented in, uh, in the, in the hills.
That development that looks like it's there at the corner, it looks like you have parking lot, is that the cemetery?
Before you turn there and-
That's the campground?
Start it, break.
That's the campground?
That's the campground.
That's the campground, okay, and the cemetery is farther than this. Oh, I see there's a cemetery. Alright, I just want to context.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And do we have water all the way out there already?
Uh, city water service is provided through Eightage Main, um-
Goes all the way out, Pat, to the-
Campground?
Industrial, goes beyond that. It goes to the industrial, I'm not sure if the industrial is served, but the water line goes all the way out to the industrial.
But do we serve the campground too?
Campground, I believe, has city service.
Okay.
So, uh, and then for that reason, again, I would say, you know, this is not really the pie in the sky here and this potentially represents some land that we would, um, potentially see a property owner requesting annexation for development.
Especially since we have water and sewer there, or into it.
Right, and flat land and State Route 20.
That would be good stuff.
Uh, the next one, uh, on our list here is, uh, the Mill Creek area, um, these are larger parcels, um, in, uh-
Mill Creek or Meadowwood?
Uh, John, you have this labeled as the, the Mill Creek area, but yes, it's the, the end of, of Meadowwood Road there.
Meadowwood or Meadow Brook?
No, Meadowwood, that's that area, um-
Oh, I know, I know where that is, it comes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I always thought it was Meadow Brook for some reason.
Uh, and then, and then you see, uh, to help orient yourself again, you see Exley Lane, Exley Road there, which you may be familiar with as well, the Tom Woodhouse has property in this area.
These are big sections that they bought off of Exley Lane. There's one for sale, it's so many poison oak in it, I'd have to go to the hospital just to drive by it.
Poison oak combining district, okay. We, uh, so this, the, the city, uh, the county has a, uh, plan for residential suburban. Uh, we would look to prezone it as residential estates if it became part of our sphere of influence. And again, because of the topography, uh, this is probably not your high density residential, but rather the, the residential estates, which, um, you, you know, typically have larger parcel sized homes and maybe bigger houses. Move on to the next one already, okay. Uh, so the next one, page 20, is the Cropley Lane Industrial. Uh, this is land that the county has zoned for industrial general and it, and, uh, this, if, if included in our sphere of influence, um, the city would look to prezone it and put our heavy industrial zoning on there. Uh, I had had contact with, uh, these property owners when, um, the cannabis, the commercial cannabis business was a, uh, was hot and heavy, a little bit more lucrative, there was high interest in, in being annexed, uh, into the city so that we could extend services and they could do a build out of that. The property owners that I've spoken to, uh, are still interested in having that option available to them. Uh, again, um, uh, there are no immediate plans that I'm aware of, um, to, to build out these areas. But what I've been told is that they would be appreciative, they would be included in our sphere of influence and having the option to annex and, um, be able to, to extend city services to their property.
And this does not abut residential? It looks like it goes up against, this isn't one of the areas that we were looking to rezone, right?
Well, to the north includes that, uh, the area that the county has zoned, um, suburban residential, uh, this area here. So it needs to, so it doesn't butt up against that.
So is that a potential conflict?
It's a, it's a conflict that exists today.
And then where Becky Bolt has her ranch or that area there?
That sounds right.
And then to the south, uh, would be the tribe, I think, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then to the east is the Salways Village.
This one that we were just, it has water on it.
The Mill Creek area?
Uh, yeah, in this area here, off of Exley. There's a house and stuff in there that the city brought in water for them, I think, a number of years ago. In fact, uh, Smith owns, owns the property and he brought it, it wasn't Smith that they brought the water in for, but they brought the water and stuff- It wasn't Smith that they brought the water in for, but they brought the water and stuff in. And there's people that are gonna buy back in this area and try to get the water and sewer to them. And that's their big thing because they've been whispering it all over town.
I believe that all existing development within this area has city water. Almost all of it is private mains. The meters are at the end of the city streets, but it's, all of them are served with city water.
And the problem with this is that the land does not perk real well. And so city and water and sewer would really be, they would go for that big time.
What does it mean when you say private mains? I mean, I know what that means, but...
They don't maintain them.
Yeah, they stop.
So you go to the meter, after the meter, it's basically a large service line to your house or to the private.
So the property owner is responsible?
Usually what it is, is a collection of, so all of us live there and I run my personal water company per se and you all have to pay me. And there's like a couple off of Sherwood that way, et cetera.
There are, most of the accounts in the East Valley is like that. So we don't have individual meters at these properties out in the valley or out here. The main stubs to a predominantly a main meter and then it's individually maintained to the residents or the property.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Exactly, almost all the way up to the end of Exley.
Yeah, you know, and according to the housing element, you know, a lot of jurisdictions are struggling to find opportunities for low and moderate income housing. And I mean, I think we have kind of a need across the board. But the bigger need that we have, which is a little bit unique in the state, is a lot of our unmet needs the above moderate and higher. And this would be land that may present those opportunities.
You know, I think the only thing that would hurt people developing in those areas right now would be the fire aspect of getting insurance.
Yeah.
There are a lot of places I'm hearing that unless you're in city proper, whether it's here or Ukiah, no one's writing policies right now. So until the state cleans that up, I think you're gonna see a lot of development stalled.
Do you think the state is gonna clean that up?
The check's in the mail.
The last one here, Barry Hale Creek area. My understanding is this property recently came under new ownership. I spoke to the current or prospective property owner and I need to follow up and provide them with some more information and I will do that. I let them know that we're, you know, potentially looking at including their property in the sphere of influence. They certainly appreciated being contacted, but their immediate ideas for the property aren't for residential purposes. And they weren't sure if they were interested in being included in our sphere of influence or not. So I think this will be one where we'll look at the property owners. If they're, no, I, you know, don't appreciate that option, then we'll pull it off. But it may be that they recognize that it provides some flexibility to them for future thoughts or maybe provide some added value to their property if they're ever to sell in the future. And it opens up the opportunity for them to be annexed in the city and receive water and sewer services. So we'll continue to help the property owner. But as is stated on here, we would look to match up the current county land you said, in addition to residential low density that ours is in the residential zone. It's supposed to be included in our sphere of influence.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's another place that needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, you can see that from the highway, unfortunately. Okay, so I may not, Mayor, I may not go throughout the policy section here now and I may not go through each of them. I kind of skip ahead and focus on a few key ones here. But please direct me as you want. And, you know, certainly we can get into the wordsmithing of it and that's fine. We'll follow your lead on that. But certainly what I'm hoping that we can get from council tonight is, wow, you guys are, you're just off, like that policy language is unneeded, unoriented. Or, yeah, no, that looks good. You know, these are a couple of concerns I have as we move forward and continue to modify the language. For if, as we go through this, if there's any issues or concerns that we haven't addressed through policy, you know, please let us know about that, too, either tonight or, you know, through correspondence after tonight when we've had further time to think about it. And we're presenting the policies and then if these make it to the end, so to speak, then what we'll be doing is working on identifying implementation measures consistent with those policies. And those are missing tonight. We're wanting to make sure we're on the right track with the policies before we start having the implementation measures, which is further than that.
So I appreciate that guidance, but I would just like to say to council, writing by committee is never a fun process. So unless you have very strong feelings about some verbiage, I would recommend making those kinds of comments to Dusty, maybe separately from the meeting, if that makes sense to everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one question. Why is some of this underlined and everyone has not?
Yeah, thank you, Larry. So what you have is a clean version. And that's probably the one that you want to look at for the benefit of this discussion. We also provided a strike-through version so that it was, you could understand what policies are new versus which ones we're carrying forward that already exist in our general planning assignment. This might become helpful when we're trying to figure out what's new versus old. But I think as staff guide you through this conversation, look at what we're calling the clean version. Okay, so we, starting with goal LU1, we talked about planning area versus a sphere of influence versus the area of interest, as well as make note of the fact that we're considered a definition of disadvantaged, that we have disadvantaged unincorporated communities surrounding us. Planning for growth, you have policy LU 2.1, plan for and accommodate a range of potential growth rates that may occur during the general planning period. What we haven't identified is the potential growth rate. So, you know, ultimately, you know, by completing these zone changes, by, you know, defining mixed use and the densities that go along with it, essentially that's, you're saying, you know, that's the growth rate. If all of that got developed out to its fullest potential, that's what we're analyzing and that's what we're looking at. What your current general plan analyzed, when we did this back in the 90s, was a build-out of about a population of 7,500. And right now, we're at about 5,000 at the city limits.
They didn't plan well.
So, you know, this certainly becomes important in kind of understanding like, well, you know, how big of a city do we want to be? You know, how big of a city do we want to plan for? And, you know, and then it certainly plays a key role in when we go to complete the environmental analysis.
I mean, that's sort of an impossible question to answer. I think it seems to me that any growth is gonna be hinging on our resources and do we really have enough water to supply everyone? Last summer, we were all worried about drought and wondering if we were gonna have to have mandatory cutbacks on usage. And this year, everyone's forgotten that drought ever existed.
Right.
So, you know, we can talk theoretically about making all of these properties available for development, but do we actually have the resources to sustain them? If suddenly developers started saying, oh, yes, Willett's is magical, we all want to build here.
Right, right.
That was, we did the vote on that one to open the door last meeting and you and I lost.
So that, is it, that's the truth of the matter, right? You're limiting factors, you know, you have a sewer treatment plant. There's capacity there, but it's limited. At some point, you're having to expand that if you want to continue to grow the city.
And the water.
The more immediate limiting factor is water. We have our surface water reservoirs, but without, you know, modifying our water infrastructure, we're, you know, running up against the limit of the number of water hookups that we could allocate consistently with the state, our state permit.
And do we know what that number is? I mean...
Do we have a solid number based on our infrastructure report, John?
It's a number less than 400.
A number less than what?
400. So EDU equivalent belonging units, so like 400 single-family homes.
So this idea of creating a plan that could potentially encompass 7,500, we're not talking about 7,500 units, we're talking about 7,500 population.
Population is what was envisioned and planned for in the previous design. So, yeah, what you're recognizing is that without upgrading our water infrastructure, whether it's, you know, creating efficiencies within the existing system, creating additional storage tanks, you know, increasing the capacity of our surface reservoirs. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussions about use of groundwater and recognizing the water basin that we're in. But, you know, if there's not a desire to increase water availability one way or another, then a lot of what we're talking about is just that.
Well, I guess I feel like everybody wants to increase water availability, but that doesn't make it so. You know, I mean, we can build more tanks, but if the rain doesn't fall, then it doesn't matter what our infrastructure looks like if the water isn't there.
There's the, what you need to do to modify your state permit in order to get that additional permission for allocation. But then there's, you know, also sort of the consciousness of, well, we don't want to set ourselves up for when we have drought conditions. And now, even though the state's allowed us to move forward, you know, was that the appropriate, you know, way to, should we have taken advantage of that permission?
Right.
And, you know, the straight up, the real water availabilities wasn't drought.
That's what groundwater was supposed to be originally, was a booster for us because of the dam and the capacity that we got with the rain and stuff. And anyhow, I'll just leave it at that.
I like all of this in theory.
Yeah.
How it plays out in real life is, nobody knows.
But that's, I mean, that's the situation is that, you know, we can talk about, you know, we want more housing, we want, you know, a plethora, a variety of commercial industrial uses and new jobs. And, yeah, we want to see the housing because we hear that Meadow Effects can hire 300 more people if we have housing, you know. There's more examples that have been reported out in the advisory committee meetings from some of the, you know, our largest employers there, whether it's the hospital or the school. We have some pretty successful cannabis businesses here as well. And according to their leadership, the limiting factor for them is housing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we all hear it. I mean, I think every council member has been cornered by somebody in Safeway who, you know, tells us that...
You gotta go late at night or early in the morning.
And I don't think anyone in this council is anti-growth. We all understand that housing is a need for our community. We just want it to be done in a smart way. And, you know, hopefully, our talented staff is leading us in that direction.
And these policies that we're trying to craft are kind of the guiding principles that we use in either making decisions or creating those decisions.
Excellent.
Well, and I think I just want to go back to saying that we don't build houses. We provide the opportunity for houses to be built.
Right.
And so the way we can streamline that for the better is the only thing we can affect with our policies, right?
Right. And, you know, what my understanding is, what developers appreciate is when you say, this is where we want it, this is what we want to see. And you set that target in the ground and you leave it there. And then, you know, and if they can't beat it, okay, well, let's let the next person try. But, you know, know what you want. So we, I mean, I know we're not gonna come to an answer tonight, but, you know, I'm glad that we got to discuss that a little bit because obviously, you know, you see the nexus and where we're at. Infield development, fully support that. So we have some policy here about recognizing the importance and the advantage of infield development. Land use changes. Talk about annexations, again, I'm just skipping all these things, but please let me know if you want to talk to them. We sort of talked about, you know, opportunities for city gateways and corridors, like the use sign that Ukiah put up. So that remains on the radar of staff and hopefully we can make some progress and find some opportunities to establish those gateway signs.
Hey, John, can you continue to scroll?
I'm probably the only one here that doesn't have a copy of the lookout.
And actually, you should use my mark.
We talked earlier about Main Street mixed use. Here it is in word format. And then also the idea of creating a separate general mixed-use area. And we have the one example of the property next door that we're currently looking to apply that we newly created zoning designation for. We have had a number of community members participate in the public outreach process. And, you know, we've heard about food security and, you know, the need for access to a healthy food system, things like community gardens have been brought up. And we've also, Joanne's here, she's been working hard on promoting increasing the recognition of tobacco usage amongst the youth. And really, these two policies were at least in part born out of that testimony. So we have the LU land use 3.5 and 3.6 that talk about promoting a healthy community and considering public health in land use. And again, I'm just about to say, like, these are policies, but upon them sort of making it to the end of this process, then we start working on the implementation measures to support the policies. So there's, you know, the details are busy. Dusty, I have a question, but it's more for John. On any of these elements as they get finalized, is there gonna be any graphic representation of these in the plan?
Yes, we have some draft narrative that would precede this, that would be graphics. If you have ideas for useful graphics, we'd love to hear those.
Ah ha, fun to begin. Scrap all the...
Have fun, John.
Thank you, Brian. So, you know, farmer's market, we understand they're, you know, never quite settled on a full home. And they mentioned the idea of, you know, coming back to Bud Snyder Park. And we did, I have an update in the department reports that you'll see at your next meeting or be sent out to you shortly. But we're looking to support a pavilion over in Bud Snyder Park. It was included in the $2.77 million grant application we made to Caltrans. And my understanding is there would be interest in moving the farmer's market, making us that pavilion if you have it. But I said, are there appropriate locations because, you know, I don't want to just lock them into just that location.
Because that's a positive, really positive farmer's market.
So then we have some policies towards energy conservation reduction, climate change, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Parks and Rec, we recognize that we have a short... Parks and Rec, we recognize that we have a shortage of recreation facilities and we should be looking to both improve as well as evaluate the feasibility of establishing new recreation areas and parks. And it may be that some of these areas that were identified to include in our SOI, it's not just about housing. It may be about finding opportunities to create, you know, building community center and recreational fields or something like that.
So that does bring me to a question that I had when we were looking at all of those cleaning up options. I didn't really see anything that was turning into open space zoning. Do we feel that we have sufficient open space within city limits to be able to enhance or grow our parks and recreation opportunities?
No, I don't think so. Right, so if we're talking about more soccer fields and more baseball fields and, you know, I kind of.
Trails.
Right, right. You know, the city, it's not like the city owns property and like, oh, we need to change it from industrial to open space or something. Nor do I have an identified property owner that's saying, hey, you can use my property and I'm willing to give up its development potential so you guys can build a park.
Right.
But, you know.
I think one of the things that I hear most consistently from community members is trying to reconnect Willets to Brook Trails via the trail system that hooks up to, what is it? The Park Horse Trail.
Yeah, that, I mean, that trail used to exist and, you know, I hear discussions about it. And, you know.
But if there was.
I would, you know, I would appreciate having some conversations with those property owners and seeing what their take was on it before, you know, considering, you know, because there are grant funds out there to do that kind of stuff. But again, it would start with talking to the property owners, maybe collectively with Brook Trails and the county and see what their concerns are.
Yeah.
And then moving forward from there.
And that makes sense.
That would be a good amenity that would be used by our communities.
Yeah, and I just feel like if there, I hear where you're coming from and I get that. If there was any, anything that the city could do from a policy perspective or from, you know, sphere of influence perspective, to let the county know that this is something that matters to our community and that if an opportunity arose and property owners were willing, we would definitely be interested. I think that would be good to have on the books.
Yeah.
Can I hear that?
Yeah.
It used to be that we could do that, you know, it was connected. And then we had some bad actors that did bad stuff for the people that own the property.
We sell a button at the book juggler that says, people ruin everything.
Yeah, that's a good one, that one for sure.
We can accommodate a trail because relatively easy on the ground because we can utilize the sewer line easement.
The question I have, and I would throw it back to the council, is maintenance.
Yeah.
It's outside of jurisdiction. Ideally, I don't know if Brook Trails would want to partner the county. They're kind of reducing their footprint. So would this be the opportunity to use as a platform for a recreational district?
So the policy LU three eleven says, support the rural city, regional parks provided by evaluating the feasibility of establishing a recreation and parks district that extends beyond the city town. So, and what that's getting at is the idea of if we're establishing the Willis Railroad Trail, again, I would want to talk to the property owners before having any kind of discussions about a trail because that, to me, that's, you show that respect first, understand where they're at regardless of this easement that we have. But then, again, working through their concerns and seeking their support. Then, as Brian mentioned, it's not about constructing as much as it's, because a lot of it's already there initially. It's about the maintenance of it and being able to showcase that to the property owners.
Because I know that in the past, there was fences like this that you had to go over, but they were cattle guards. And, but you also had kind of this fencing this way. And, I mean, if people are messing with your cattle, I kind of saw it with the property owners.
Absolutely.
You know, that they had every right to try and protect their interests because we weren't and the county wasn't. So they had to take it in their own hands.
So this is the policy that would support ideas like that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
So then we get on to some of the Main Street policies. These are focused on that area between Oak Street and the city limits to the north. So again, you know, looking for ways to encourage the reuse and revitalization of our existing commercial structures. Looking to create downtown gathering street activities, some of these things, slowing traffic. A lot of this is stuff that's envisioned in our Main Street plan. And then looking to protect the mixed-use shop fronts.
I guess my only concern in this one is that LU four point two, the adaptive reuse, it just, again, scares me, reducing or eliminating onsite parking requirements. I know we had this discussion when we were talking about mixed use. Just seeing it in black and white kind of sends shivers down my spine.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I'm not convinced it's a good idea myself. It was more just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Yep.
As a Main Street business owner, I hear complaints all the time about lack of parking, even when I look across the street and I see plenty of parking.
And as a shopper, we don't want less parking, right?
Right, right, right. But if it's a perception in the community, that's important. The perception is there's already too little, we don't want to codify, hey, we're going to reduce it further.
Right.
Just on that, would it be easy if we generated a simple map and got it on a website that where public parking areas are and get it out there?
Just heard a debate yesterday about whether or not that's public parking next to Pete Swanson's place where the music committee was. And I said, yes, it's public parking. And they said, no, it's not. Yes, it is. People don't know.
It's something we'll look at and doing, right Dylan?
I mean, I even think that signage, attractive signage that says free city parking.
We can fix that.
You know, there's a sign on Wood Street that points people towards this city parking lot and it's about this big. You can't see it when you're driving down Main Street.
We'll see Brian on Sunday.
We have the big finger.
Yeah, yeah.
We talked about it at Re-Bye End.
Get a picture of him and we'll put it on Facebook.
No, that would be the summer article for the newsletter.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
It's all coming together.
Nice.
We got it covered.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, so now we're moving on and showing some love to South Main Street.
Yay.
Okay. And looking to work with Caltrans because again, that's their roadway. And, you know, I understand it, you know, we like some of the things that have been happening in downtown, North Main. Can we get something like that on South Main? And the reality is you have a Caltrans highway. You have a narrow sidewalk with all kinds of driveways. You have power lines above you. So the environment's not there to plant trees, to extend out sidewalks. Again, it's under Caltrans control. You know, we may be coming forward to you. Caltrans is looking at potentially doing some changes in that area. I don't have anything to share with you yet, just to let you know that hopefully we will soon. But, you know, and we do have some cool conceptual drawings included in our Main Street corridor plan. But what this is directing to us is really to look to Caltrans and have that and go through that planning process with the public and specifically those property owners and seeing if we can't come up with some ideas to implement that would.
Has anybody met with the new owner of the shopping center out there?
No, we spoke to their, one of their representatives. The Chamber of Commerce had asked me for some information. They just contacted us regarding their sewer billing and that was it. Apparently, the main owner does not like to communicate too effectively with groups or city.
Continuing on, so then, so land use policy five point three, pedestrian curmages. So on Main Street, you have the commercial buildings right up against the street. And for whatever reason, on South Main, they're tucked back from the street and the parking's in the front. So this is looking at changing that around. And again, you got what you got, but it may be that as you move into the future and buildings are expanded or taken down and moved, that we would look to push everybody towards the front and put the parking in the back.
I think I would run that by some of the South Main business owners because I think there's a certain pride in the fact that the South Main portion of town services, larger vehicles, larger equipment. I mean, it's like a working portion of Main Street and I think there's some pride in that. So I don't know that we necessarily want to push a downtown view or look onto an area that's already working in a certain way.
And some of them do like parking lot events and they have the room to do them, so they.
I mean, they have to accommodate vehicles with trailers. They have to accommodate, you know, bigger equipment than downtown businesses do.
Did you go to the truck parade that we have at Christmas night? I mean, the people were lined up with their decorated trucks. You know, I mean, that's what they're saying, that's what South Main is saying. You know, that there's a spot for us.
But I think as things evolve, that there's an opportunity to allow for that type of big parking lot feel and still move forward. I'm thinking about the buildings that are down there. Just going to use an example, like Little Lake Auto Parts, it sits back. But using them as an example, if that building was to continue and grow forward towards Main Street, you could still have a huge parking lot, right? So that's an example, I can see where like moving forward would bring more of a presence up to the front. You still have plenty of place to stop parked.
Yeah.
And there's other businesses like that that have enough land that they could accommodate both.
Yeah, I appreciate those thoughts. And, you know, maybe we're premature with that recommendation and we do the focused planning effort and then we get that feedback through that. And that can lead us towards future modifications if any. So we'll play around with that and certainly keep an outreach. So then, in the South Main Street street cape improvements, that's looking to work with Caltrans and try to create some opportunities to do, you know, tree planting, extended sidewalks and create a little bit more pedestrian friendly and do some beautification efforts to that end of town. But again, those opportunities don't exist really with the narrow sidewalks, there's no irrigation, et cetera.
And while I think there would be some business owners down there and some community members who would say that's, you know, not necessary, I also think it's important for the entire community to remember that that is basically the front doorstep to our community, that people who are coming to Willets and driving to the coast are going down that portion of Highway twenty slash Main Street and it should look welcoming. I mean, yes, it can be a working section, but it should have some.
The main thing that I brought up was the signage. I mean, right at first, you know, welcome to Willetts, have a nice sunny, that's a starter.
And cutout writing and benches and art and all those sorts of things help pull that in?
Yeah, and that all is encompassed under the street cape improvements. Yeah, I took, anyway, I heard from businesses that, you know, they were saying they would appreciate those types of stuff. But it sounds like the one we can really latch on to is doing a focused planning effort on that area of town and coordinating with Caltrans to see if we can't get a plan of action together. And like I said, there are some discussions and we may be bringing it forward. So some work that Caltrans has been doing in the future.
Well, and also making sure that those businesses know that we want to hear from them. That, you know, not just Caltrans, but, you know, because how can we support you? Because I think we hear a lot from them that they feel like they're chopped liver compared to the North End.
Yeah, I think there's a perception that planning happens here without their engagement.
Yeah, and there was like a chamber meeting or something and that spurred quite a bit of discussion and calls to me. And I was surprised to find out that a lot of people didn't understand that that roadway was under Caltrans jurisdiction. So it felt like they were productive conversations, but again, it just reiterated the work of Caltrans and have some focused planning effort on that area of town.
Excellent.
But yes, further public outreach is warranted. Land use compatibility and flexibility, fairly straightforward, some good provisions here. Carrying forward this area of agricultural use, you're allowed to do agricultural and industrial zoning. This was something I spoke at a well meeting on Sunday that Madge organized. And again, there was a lot of discussions about maintaining lands for agricultural purposes. It appeared that this policy was supported by some of those folks. The idea of workforce housing development, again, we bring up Senate Bill nine that we touched on earlier there and looking to support those opportunities. Talked about off-reach parking, implementing a parking management plan. So again, the scary word of eliminating. But as we tweak the other ones, then these ones naturally get tweaked as well. They're all building off of each other and somewhat we've had to do. So commercial zoning flexibility here. So again, last time the land use settlement update was comprehensively done was in the early nineties. The last time the zoning code was comprehensively updated. I wasn't born, yeah, it was a long time ago. So, you know, there's an opportunity to kind of take a fresh look. And we really want to focus on the, you know, the commercial zoning in that your, a lot of the uses as they existed before aren't really the same now. So an example would be like, we don't allow for, you know, a printing business in C one. And they used to, and we say, no, that's for industrial zones. Well, back in the eighties, I understand it was a pretty dirty, there was a lot of chemicals involved and, you know.
Machinery.
Machinery, noise, and you really, you know, jurisdictions left that to industrial. Well, now, like, when you go into Akinko's, that's not quite what it is. So that would be an example of something we might go, yeah, in nineteen eighty, that was industrial. But in two thousand twenty-three, that's probably something that we could allow as a permitted use in the C one zone. Stagecoach repair and telegraph, you know, studios, maybe those use groups can be eliminated from the zoning code now, right? But, so we're looking for, you know, support from council through this policy to take a fresh look at the allowed uses in the commercial zonings and come forward with some potential zoning code changes.
I think that's a great idea, overdue.
Does, is there any state law that, or anything coming down the pipes regarding electric vehicle charging stations? I mean, right now, I'm sure there's rules regarding what you have to have as far as handicap. But I've noticed that in a lot of places, it's handicapped or electric vehicle charging slash. Is that, is there a requirement that a business have to put that infrastructure in yet or is that coming down the pipe?
No, I'm not aware of a state law or anything coming down the pipe that says, yeah, when you create a parking lot, you have to put EV charging stations in that parking lot. Or when you establish a gas station, you can have gas pumps, but you also got to have X amount of charging stations. What state law has done is they've limited local authority over our ability to say no in certain circumstances. So like the Safeway parking lot, you know, we said, you know, let's not put those right in the prime parking spaces. Can we put those over to the side a little bit out of the way? And state law, you can, you know, whatever. We looked at it and it's more expensive to do it that way, so we're not going to do it. And so that was where we didn't have, you know, clear authority to dictate exactly where those went or even to say no. And unfortunately, the concerns we had actually came to fruition and we've had to do some reinforcement there. But, so there is, you know, definitely are some provisions in state law that remain in our local authorities.
Better talk to the lead, Jerry.
No, I'm just wondering whether or not there is or isn't.
Yeah, we talked earlier about looking at potentially identifying expanded uses, maybe up against some additional standards for supporting some home-based businesses. We have some policies related to our, the local tribe that part of our community, tribal consultation. consideration of environmental justice when, when making land use decisions. Obviously involving the neighborhood and, and decision-making. Then we get to the section on protecting natural resources. And really what this is is sort of expanding on some of the existing measures that already exist and identifying those clearly. So talking about protecting wetlands, identifying, creating an overlay district for our riparian areas around our, our creeks and waterways, the need to protect oak, oak trees and woodlands. Again, I mean, a lot of this is state law. It's not really our discretion, but we felt it was important to carry these forward and expand on them in, in our update here. We have a section on other land use considerations, including emergency evacuation. There's a policy here about, and then again, this is, this is in here and, you know, council may want to weigh in on it. But you guys are also a planning commission. It used to be that the city had a separate planning commission that would either make decisions or at least make recommendations to council. So there's a, a policy in here about re-establishing that planning commission. And then finally, we look at defining our existing land use designations, including the, the two designated destinations that we're looking to add to our toolbox. And there's this, this sort of standard general plan, maybe it's provisions. It's not, we're not supposed to do this every 35 years, it's more likely every 10.
Does he have a lot of work and energy that we have to do?
So Dusty, I have a question and it doesn't so much relate to us, but what I'm seeing in UConn at the, I think in their case, it's the Redwood Credit Union Building that for whatever reason there, it's being proposed. It sounds like a good plan, but because of the way that their general plan described it, I guess they were making something in the paper about, hey, it was supposed to be more of a walkable community and now they want to put a parking lot in, which I could see because you got a bank, you know? And there was a lot of folks writing in, I think the general plan. Is there a lot of latitude? Because sometimes a bank may be a good thing for the community, you know? And are you, do you have that latitude in a lot of these developments to offer? What is that word you guys like to use where you give them a pass?
Variance or something?
Variance, thank you, variance.
Yeah, I mean, you can get a variance to standards like setbacks and, you know, parking and height. You know, you're not giving a variance to like, well, you know, it's zone residential and you want to put a bank in. Like, no, you got to rezone your property. You're not giving a variance to something like that. I, I'd have to, to learn more about the specific situation in UConn with the bank and how the parking lots interfering with walkability. I'm not sure. I mean, the general plan, I mean, it's, it's just out of its general and really it's guided me towards the zoning code part of it. And, and that's where, you know, you can get into those standards. And I think that's where your teeth are and you're, and you need to make sure that you're either providing the flexibility or being clear about what you want or you don't want.
Well, and I guess because it's a vision and I guess that's the problem of waiting 35 years versus every 10 years. Then if council now goes, we have this vision and then all of a sudden the economy changes, something's way different than what you, in your general plan and things have changed and you'd want to change how you're doing things.
And, and you're, you're allowed to come back here and legally modify these things. You know, it's not like you have to do a comprehensive exercise every time. We're doing that because, you know, it's understood that we're way past date on it. But, you know, we're allowed to focus in on one issue and then realize like, oh, we have a general plan, a policy that's inconsistent with where we're wanting to go based on the change in, in a number of factors. We can go back and modify that individual policy and then carry that down for certain provisions.
I've had a lot of community members ask me about One Town, One Vision, which was a big planning effort, what, more than 20 years ago now at this point? Was that at all referenced for the creation of this? Was there any look back to see, because that got a lot, that plan got a lot of community input. And a lot of the people who gave that input still live here and wonder what happened.
Yeah, I think that's one of those ones that ended up on the shelf.
Okay.
Right.
Right. So I know you're under, you know, total crunch timeline, but...
No, so I don't, there weren't like verbatim, like every word just got put forward here. But yes, a lot of the provisions that we have in here are consistent and carry forward the provisions that were, were in that document.
Okay.
I will, I will, can't remember if I, that was one of the documents I gave to our consultants early on in the process. I'll revisit that and we'll make sure to, to take a look at that and...
I do hear about that a lot from community members.
See if that spurs any, any new ideas and show that respect and, and make sure that happens.
Fantastic, thank you. Well, I think this is a very exciting draft. It covers a lot of ground and holy cow, it's thorough.
It's really thorough.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much to the whole team for putting this together and, yeah. What are our next steps? What's the timeline for?
So again, we are, I, this was productive for, for us. We, we got, I, I think we got a lot of good direction that we're seeking, but there are some more homework assignments for us. But it sounds like we're, our efforts are appreciated and we're moving in the right direction. So what we get to do now is further refine these, develop administrative draft to, to share with staff and get further comments with other agencies. That becomes a public draft. We have another meeting now to report out with the advisory committee. And so I'm trying to recall our timeline.
And then really just be moving forward with the entire...
Yeah. So we'll get an update to, to council. But we're moving towards getting a public draft together. And again, we're, you know, needing to wrap this up by the end of the year unless we can work out some provisions with our funding groups that allow us to, to spend some, some more time and continue to get some more public outreach. Because again, this is a process that a lot of jurisdictions take, you know, decent amount of time on and we're really fast tracking it. But either way it goes, we're making some positive improvements for, for getting there very much.
When I ran for council four, five years ago now, one of the things that I told the voters I wanted to do was be involved in the update of the general plan. And so I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to weigh in and share the perspectives I hear from community members on the development of this document. So thank you so much for the opportunity and bringing it forward.
Get to start.
Yes, indeed. All right, if there's nothing else, I say adjourned at 9:12. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.